Now you're getting quite a shock of gray hair in the front of your head.
Yeah, it's kids. Emery, is that your Peloton or your scooter next to you?
Oh, it's my skater.
It's her wannabe Peloton.
I actually gave this haircut to myself. Mayor, what do you think? What do you think?
By yourself? You did that? I'm very impressed.
Yep, number, number four on the sides, number five up here.
I'm impressed.
That's a number five. Okay.
Yeah, four and then five here, yeah.
Okay, because my son is in desperate need of a haircut and my husband only does clippers. And he's like, you're not putting it on the top of my head.
Yeah, Rita cleaned up the back because I thought I did a good job, but then the boys took a picture of the back of my head and I saw that, you know, I needed help there.
I usually clean up the back of Michael's too. He's been cutting his own hair. He doesn't have quite as much. He's got that thinning spot.
Politically challenged. All right. How many people do we have?
That's how I'm paying for my Christmas is all those savings I get from my haircuts this year.
Tim, you really are cold. You're going to keep your, keep your scarf on, huh?
Yeah, man, it is. Yep, it is cold in this house.
Let's get you a space heater or something. Ask Santa for a space heater.
Yeah.
This is coming.
You see the news about, it's just us, right?
No.
No, we've got 16 attendees.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Glenn Beck with us yet?
I'm watching for him. I'm not seeing him and I'm.
I don't see him yet either.
I want to apologize, by the way, our printer isn't working, so I'm going to have the documents up on another computer. So if you, if I'm looking away, it's not that I'm not paying attention. It's just the only way I can see the, the documents. I have some of them, but not all of them.
I think we're, I know I'm pretty spread out all over, all over the place here too. Still no Glenn.
Let's see, um, oh, hold on, found him.
Okay, good.
Easy, yeah.
There he is.
Hey, everybody. Sorry for that.
No problem. Thank you. Okay, so Tim is off screen, but he'll, he'll off camera, he's off camera, but I'm sure he'll join us in a minute. There he is. Okay, great. So it is 6:33 on Monday, December the 14th, and we're here for the monthly meeting of the Mayor and City Council. Thank you all for attending. It looks like we have 17 attendees with us this evening in addition to the 11 of us that are on the screen. So I thank you all for being here this evening. And before we get started, I do have a few announcements I'd like to share with everyone. First of all, I hope everyone is enjoying the Lewis Lights. I want to thank Christian Mullins and Deborah Ewalds for all their efforts to organize the Lewis Lights program. It has been a phenomenal success. Many, many people are out and taking the tour. I think they have well over 300 lights, or 300 homes and businesses that are participating in this. I see a steady, at my office overlooks Palatown Road, I see a steady stream of vehicles coming up and down the road every night as they do this tour. So congratulations on, to them for having launched a very successful new program for the city. And one that is certainly a bright spot in this otherwise very quiet and very importantly quiet time for us. Also, I would like to thank our hospitality ambassadors who've made it possible for us to have Santa in his house. Although nobody is visiting Santa in his home, Santa, they're all, anyone who wants to is able to go visit Santa on Saturday and Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00. At the Santa house, he's inside and the children are asked to stay outside. And they can also, they're also thanks to them through one of their volunteers, son, there was a mailbox for Santa. And Santa, as I understand, is responding to letters that are left for him. So again, thank you very much to the hospitality ambassadors. They were a big part of the success of our summer. And I'm sure they're helping to make Christmas as bright as possible. So by way of announcement also, City Council or City Hall will be closed on December 24th and 25th. And City Hall will also be closed on, on, on December 31st and January 1st. So our city employees can enjoy more time with their family. I'd like to also make everyone aware, if you haven't already heard, that the Jones Farm purchase has been completed. We've, the city worked with Sussex County and the Board of Public Works to make this happen. I think it's a great success for the entire region and certainly one that will help protect our well field recharge area. The group of the three entities that went together to make this happen will now begin work on a development management plan. And eventually the, the construction of a new water tower will be done by the BPW. For the foreseeable future, I think we can expect that the, the field will be plowed until, as it has been in the previous years, until the management plan is further developed. The work on Pilot Town Road by BPW of waterline replacement is continuing. They have had lane closures from intermittently as this construction project has gone on. But whether the last several weeks has made that project, has helped that project move along, they're, they're moving right away, right? They're almost out to Palatown Village, which is very encouraging. And the Coleman Street Avenue project, the Coleman Avenue and the Fourth Street project is just beginning. There is really not any significant work that has happened there, but in the next few weeks, you'll probably be seeing a lot more activity there. That work will be particular in Coleman, that will be a little more disruptive with the street being closed intermittently during the day completely. It is a one-way street. So plan your route accordingly as that comes along. And then I'd also like to recognize that the League of American Bicycleists have recognized Lewis at the bronze level as bike, as a bike-friendly community. That's a re-designation of that bronze level. I want to thank Don Long for all his work in getting that application submitted. And recognize also that Mike Tyler, our longtime previous chair of the Bike Pet Committee, was the one who first helped us achieve that recognition. As we know, bicycling is an important part of this community. Equally important to getting around on a bike and being a pedestrian as well is bicycle safety. This past weekend was absolutely gorgeous and there were a lot of people out using their bikes. And I encourage people to be as safe as possible as they use their bikes and be mindful that bikes need to address, need to obey the same laws and with, as traffic does. So we're very fortunate. We haven't had any serious injuries with bicyclists and I'm hoping we will not. So, but again, congratulations to our Bike Pet Committee for their efforts to achieve a bronze level. This is a war, this is an award that will remain in place for four years. So it's good until 24. Those are the announcements I have. If anyone at the table here or on the screen here have announcements they would like to, additional announcements they'd like to make.
I'd like to offer up congratulations to the Cape Girls Field Hockey Team for winning the state championship.
Great, good. Okay.
I wanted to just make a point to let people know that the, we are not allowing use of the meeting rooms in the Rollins Center and the net house at this point because of COVID. And we are not issuing permits for bonfires.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, there were no other announcements, so then we can move on to item E1, which presentate, which is presentation of the Annual Employee Service Awards. Every year, we recognize employees for their years of dedicated service to the city. And this evening, these awards are normally passed out at our Christmas luncheon, which usually, which would have happened this coming Friday. But due Co, due to COVID, we are not going to be having that luncheon. So we're going to make note of these awards here this evening. The first award goes to Chata Marsh of our Police Department for his 15 years of public service to the city. Chata's been with us a long time. He's very well-known, I think, in the community and very active on our mitigation team. And Chata has been a long-term member of the force and we thank him for his service. Next, I'd like to recognize Rodney Reynolds, who has 10 years of service in our Streets Department. Rodney's a very dedicated worker. You see him out early in the morning with the trash trucks. He's always a very positive attitude and thank him for his service as well.
And Rodney is with us tonight.
I do see Rodney's on this and Rodney and Rick Melendez, Supervisor of the Maintenance Department is there as well. So thank you guys. You guys are doing a terrific job throughout this COVID and Rodney, congratulations. Also, next person I'd like to recognize is James Bachman. He is a member of our Police Department. He's completing five years of service to the city. Jim is out in a police car and on the street. You'll probably see him in many of the events around the city. And again, thank Jim for his service. And the fourth recipient of recognition here this evening is Detective Cheeseman is Allison Kirk. Allison has been with the city five years and she has moved through a couple of jobs in the city. And I don't think she's on tonight.
She is on, she's on by phone.
Oh, okay. Well, Allison, thank you very much. And Allison is currently our Facilities Management Person. But before that, she did manage our Parks and Rec Commission and did a great job there. So thank you to all four of these individuals for their dedicated service to the city. As you can tell from this, it's great for us to have such a stable workforce. It really does make the job of running the city a lot easier, not necessarily easier, but a lot more smooth. So I thank you and I know members of council joined me in passing along our congratulations to each of you. And thank you for the work you've done for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. So then moving on, then to item E2 is presentation, possible action on the appointments of the Public Art Committee to reappoint Barry Duncan and Denise Emery. Both of, I've spoken with both Barry and Denise and they are interested and quite willing to continue their service to the Public Art Committee. And I would ask council consider their reappointment. Is there a motion to do such?
So moved.
Thank you, Bonnie. Andrew, was that a second? A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item E3 is presentation, possible action on the appointment of, to the Lewis African-American Heritage Commission to fill an unexpired term of Nancy Powell with D. Lot. Nancy Powell had joined the commission early on and she is involved in other activities with the city. And she asked if she could step down from this position because she felt she was needing a little more time. And D. Lot, who has been an active volunteer at the city, particularly with our elections, has expressed an interest in joining. And the African-American Commission has suggested that D. Lot be appointed. I have spoken with the, look forward to her service here. Would ask for approval of that. True motion. Thank you, Rob. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Tim. A second.
Before you, on that, may I mention that you, you didn't include D. Lot's something like 19 or 20 years on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee?
You know, I overlooked that, Rob. Thank you very much.
Wow, that's terrific.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We lost Bonnie temporarily. She's still here, but she's.
I'm here, I'm here, sorry. Video, but I'm here and I voted.
Okay. Okay.
Actually, you're glad that I got off video, but now I'm back, so.
Okay. We won't ask details. Okay, moving on, we can move on to the consent agenda. I note on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from our November 9th meeting and our December 20th meeting, which was a public hearing. What is not part of the consent agenda that for us to consider here tonight is the Board of Public Works meeting minutes. Nor do we have the Fire Department Activity Report. Other than that, the Police Report, the Financial Activity Report and our Mayor and City Council Meeting Minutes and Public Hearing Minutes are here for approval. Is there a motion to approve those?
I had a, I had a couple of things on the November 9th minutes. I'm sorry, I should have submitted them before, but in section three, when we were talking about 5G, I believe it is. Paragraph three, it says, "Councilperson Rissler suggested that there should be no cell infrastructure in historic district." That's not how I recall that. I don't recall him making, making that statement that there should be no cell infrastructure in the historic district. I think it was a question, I thought it was, he may have asked that as a question, but I don't think he was making a statement that there should be no cell infrastructure in the historic district. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tim. I don't think you said that.
I would agree with you, Andrew. Thank you for pointing that out. The, that's correct. The, the expectation in the historic district will be if there's a need for any kind of additional infrastructure to be placed, it would be this small cell, it's called small cell, small cell infrastructure. And there's a possibility we might, they might, the communication companies might need that, but it's not known at this point in time.
So.
Go ahead.
I was, what we could do is ask Janine to, to go back and listen to that section to get it correct and then bring the, the minutes back next month.
Okay, that would be the minutes from our November 9th meeting. We would exclude that from the consent agenda. I think.
The, there's, there's two others actually. So under new business point three, presentation, possible action on Chesapeake Utility Franchise Agreement. It says set to expire September 12th, 2021. I think that's when we have to give notice. I don't think the agreement expires on that date, does it?
It would have expired that early if we had given notice a year in advance, but we didn't. So that's the, the first date we could have terminated with a year's notice. And it's, but you're right, it wasn't due to expire then.
Okay. The franchise agreement, I'm sorry, the franchise agreement has a 20-year term, I believe, doesn't it, Rob?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was 10, it was a 10-year with a 10-year renewal, right, Rob?
Correct.
No, it's not 10-year renewal, it's kind of a rolling.
Right.
Renewal.
Right.
The 10 years have passed, we have the right to terminate on one year's notice.
Right. Okay. And then the last thing I, I promise is on same point, paragraph six or I guess it's six, where it starts Canary Creek has 102 homes. The la, the last pair, last sentence says, "There is a portal for that." But I think it should read, "Is there a portal for that?" Mr. Holden will let council know, because I don't think there is a portal for that. For the, for people reporting whether or not they want natural gas.
Right. There isn't a portal for that.
Yeah.
Right.
It should simply read, "Is, is there a portal?" And I think the answer is no.
Yes, correct.
Great catches, Andrew.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, so I think what we can do is we can exclude the approval of the meeting minutes from the ninth with that subject to those changes. And, and Janine going back and listened to it, we could go ahead then and approve the, approve the public hearing minutes. And the Police Department Activity Report and the Financial Activity Report unless there's other comments to that.
All I wanted to say on the Financial Activities Report is, you know, yet again, to give a lot of credit to the staff because the city is staying very, we're, we're on very solid ground despite all of the demands of the last, the last year. And it's to their credit, so that's it. That's all I want to say.
Yep, we, thank you.
I'll move, I'll move the approval of the consent agenda.
Right. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Tim. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving then on to the City Manager Report in brief.
All right, so we have two active infrastructure construction projects ongoing at the moment. One is the Pilot Town Road Water Bane Replacement. That will continue into spring and then take a summer hiatus and then start back up again in the fall. The Phase 24 Street Program is Coleman Avenue, East Fourth Street, and then they're also replacing the water mains. And then we're doing some crosswalk upgrades. That has started, it has not started in earnest. They were really just starting to get moving and then a member of the, the crew ended up having COVID. So the entire crew is quarantining. They had another crew set up to come in this, this week to, to keep that project moving. So, you know, I guess in, in 2020, if something can create a hiccup, it will. Tomorrow, the, the Board of Health is meeting at 3:00. And I, I think it'll be an interesting discussion as, you know, a couple of, of major things. One, the, the number of cases being up as they are at the moment. And, you know, how BB's doing in terms of hospitalizations. But it also looks like the, the statewide number of critical patients is up based on the numbers released today. But then the other, the other good news that I'm sure we'll hear a little bit about is that the vaccine is now in the process of being deployed, the Pfizer vaccine. So they are going to start giving that to the, the frontline healthcare workers and first responders. So it'll be interesting to hear BB's plans or, you know, how they're coordinating with public health and what goes there. So that, that is definitely something worth attending tomorrow at 3:00. Obviously a Zoom meeting.
Just to add one other thing, it blipped across my screen when we were in executive session, but, excuse me. But I believe that it, it looks like the schools are, are going to go all to distance, distance learning. Again, I. Very quickly, but.
We just announced it.
Yeah. Because, because of the COVID situation, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's going to be, I, I think it's going to be a tough month if, ahead of us.
Well, you know, along those lines, I think the governor has announced new, new guidance that has gone into effect today with restaurants being down to 30%.
Right.
All of the other things. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Emery.
No, that's fine. We, we have had a number of personnel activities. Christine Ho, who actually is watching the meeting tonight, I noticed she's one of our attendees. Her last day with us was December 8th, so she has, has moved on. She will be starting a job just after Christmas with the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. So she was able to help us get a lot of projects done, a new evaluation system, personnel manual, updating job descriptions and a lot of smaller projects as well. So we will miss her. Pat Liberto retired. Her last day was December 4th, so she, we will miss her as well. We have hired a replacement for her. Chelsea Moore started on December 7th. So she was a permit technician at Sussex County. And then we also hired a, for our maintenance worker, two position that was vacant, Tony Tattoli, and he started work with us on December 1st. So, you know, we, we've had a little bit of staffing change, but I, I think we're really putting together a, a really solid team going forward, so I'm excited about that. Um. We did, the mayor and I did meet with LHS in early November to talk about our plans for the new restaurants over at the Rollins Center. So that, that was some good news and based on the Capitol Projects meeting we had last week. You're all aware that that is moving forward. There was a public workshop on the West Cedar Street Flood Study on November 17th. Both the beach and the downtown parking committees have been meeting. The, the beach parking committee's been meeting just about weekly. I think they're taking a couple of weeks after tomorrow for the holidays. And then they'll start back up in, in January. And then the, this wasn't November, but it's worth mentioning that the pickleball committee started meeting. Their first meeting was December 4th, so that's kind of a highlight of what's been going on.
Mayor, I've got a question for Anne Marie about recycling. Anne Marie, you gave, in your city managers' report, the, the, the numbers for recycling and trash and stuff. Emery, you gave, in your city managers' report, the, of the, the, the numbers for recycling and trash and stuff. I did want to ask, you warned us a couple of months ago, I think, that we were gonna start getting dinged if we had too many unacceptable items in the recycling bins. And I wanted to ask how that's going.
So to, to my knowledge, we have not gotten a, a fine, or it's not a fine. It's that they would charge us, when we take recycling, there's no tipping fee. So if it's a contaminated load, then, and by contaminated, they mean more than 10%, and this is just based on visual inspection that would be non-recyclable and single stream. That we would be paying $71 a ton, which is almost what we pay for our regular trash tipping fee. To my knowledge, hold on. I just saw Rick had texted me, but it's not about that. I thought maybe he was telling me. But to my knowledge, we have not gotten a tipping fee yet. So our, our guys are, our guys are pretty vigilant about, you know, if they see something, they will remove it from the container. We, our Denrex recycling program reached out and they are going to be providing stickers that we will be putting on the, the lids of the recycle carts. And they didn't say when they would be in, but I suspect they'll be in in January. So that will let people know what can and cannot go in the cart.
Any other comments or questions for Emery? Hearing none, we can accept that report by common consensus. Emery, thank you very much. I would just add one other thing, and that is that we have put stickers on, you have had stickers placed on the meters downtown reminding people that there is still a three-hour limit on the parking meters, although it's, they're not in effect. That does help the turn of, of the meter spaces so that people can get in and, and shop and, and move on about their business. So I ask everyone to please observe those requirements. Moving then on to unfinished business, we have a presentation possible action from Quest Fitness for end of season report and a request for the 2021 license to operate a rental shack for kayaks and other beach equipment at Roosevelt Inlet. Matt Carter is with us tonight. Emery, can you elevate him to join us? I believe, does he have a report that he has sent to you to share?
I do not have a physical report. I think he was planning to provide a verbal report. So he is, he is now elevated as a panelist. So Matt, if you wanna give us an update?
There he is.
Okay. All right. So anyway, thank you for having me in, on. And so let's see, Roosevelt Inlet 2020, the summer was overall, overall a success despite COVID restrictions, slow start for our season. Being down there, you know, a lot of the pros were, we made numerous good judgments and preventive decisions of preventing mishaps because we had eyes on the water and our beach presence. We were able to give safety advice about tides, wind, future weather forecasts to a lot of the beachgoers. Whether they were customers or not, they were, you know, numerous people just come and sit and talk to us to, you know, see what it's like down there because it's the first time they, they're taking their kayak out on the water or their kids or something like that. So we also documented 11 saves on the water that were not Quest customers. Whether it's children or adults being pulled out by tides, the winds picked up, you know, it's, we're bad with the south wind, or, you know, storms were approaching. So you know, some of, some of these saves, we had to paddle out, you know, close to, you know, quarter mile to get somebody because their kids were out there drifting away. We had one incident down there this year, Roosevelt staff member, the beachgoer ran up to us and asked us to call 911. Their daughter was, went in shock and unresponsive to, to, due to a bee sting. Our staff called 911, took the victim by the beach access chair down there up to the parking lot for the paramedics. Those parents were very extremely thankful for our presence at Roosevelt Inlet. We provided first aid assistance to numerous people that were either needed shade, water, needed hydration. We've had foot lacerations and also burns from sand scalding defeat. So the first aid presence was great. We had beach, the beach access chair, this is for the entire beach. We didn't break it down to just Roosevelt, but we had over 50-plus days of beach access chairs requested. A lot of times it's, you know, just somebody there for the day. Sometimes it's, you know, seven days for the week. We cleaned up a total of eight fires, not Quest permit fires that we got permits for that were just left unattended that we, when we were down there cleaning up a fire from our, from one of our parties, we've had other parties that left their fires unattended. We cleaned those up as well. If it wasn't that morning or that night because it was still lit, we saw, you know, debris of firewood from the night before elsewhere and we cleaned those up. Overall, we had a very high, positive, very positive response from people, compliments, you know, appreciation of our services. It did help the business with expedite, expediting services down there as well. Less driving back and forth on Cedar Avenue. You know, couple of learning curves, what days were busy, when was it not gonna be busy? Weather forecast, you know, they're calling for rain all day. The staff calls out, it ends up being beautiful and you know, it's too late to get a staff member down there. You know, that was, that one was on me making a bad call. You know, but overall financially, it was a success. Businesswide and I think community why it was a success, successful summer. We are looking to, we would like to ask for a one to three-year contract. You know, offering more than one year, it gives us more incentive to devote more into it. You know, we can expand on our services, better signage, things that we know we're gonna be there for a while. So any questions for?
Great. Thank you, Matt. A quick question or a quick comment. I did have some positive feedback from the yacht club. The manager of the yacht club spoke very highly of your services being there and what you added, saying not only that, that you added for people who were at Roosevelt Inlet, but also people who were at the yacht club who may have wanted to take advantage of what you had for them to rent. So I did hear positive comments from them. It sounds as though you're, there were some unintended positive consequences for you, at least the things we didn't talk about initially in terms of state water saves and first aid that you were able to administer to people who really maybe not be taking other advantages of your services. So those are some great things that helped. So thank you. Questions from the table and your comments?
I did have a few comments. Matt, you neglected to mention that you hosted Senator Coons at one of your parties this year, which is impressive. And then I, I don't know if you could elaborate for the group who's not familiar. You, you mentioned beach access chair, but I'm not sure that those who are listening maybe have a keen understanding of, of what you mean by that. And I think it might be helpful for people to understand and then maybe potentially use for someone they know.
So for anybody with a mobility issue of accessing the parks, say they needed, you know, knee replacement, hip replacement, any type of special needs. These beach chairs basically are the type, the ones with the big four, four big tires, enlarged balloon tires that they can use at no expense. We just ask for reservations ideally so we can have it ready for them up at the parking lot. But it's theirs for the day. They can take it from parking lot down to the beach. They can walk the beach. You know, with reservations, they can have it for numerous days. So we've, we have four of those now through the nonprofit Mason's Mobility Mission. So, but you just have to call Quest to get the, ask for it.
Are those battery powered, Matt?
No, they are, they are not battery powered.
They're human powered. Yeah, well.
So you need a teammate there.
Yeah, okay. Other comments? I'll make one comment real quickly, and that is I had the occasion to talk to the Matt's employees at the, at the rental shack along Savannah a couple of times. And they were incredibly polite and helpful. And I commend you for, you know, the quality, the people you are able to hire. Thank you. And I also thank you for the, it's impressive about the number of saves that you were able to accomplish out there at the Roosevelt Inlet location. That's, that's, that's very impressive. Thank you.
Matt, one question. Go ahead, Rob.
Matt, I, I wondered, you, you said one to three years. Last year was one. It was a, a kind of a trial. It looks as though it's done very well. Is there some, some reason for asking for more than a year at a time? Is it that you have an multi-year investment to make or something like that? Or is it feasible to do it year by year?
I, I would prefer more than one year. It's, gives me, you know, like how many chairs should I order? Do I need more equipment for that location? You know, what type of signage I buy? You know, it's, and so it just allows me to make a better business investment into certain products that we would supply down there. You know, it allows me to talk to the service that's gonna take the the shack on and off every year, you know, they, so I can negotiate better prices as well and things like that.
Well, you've got a, a five-month, I mean, five months before you're gonna be setting up again, I expect. Isn't that enough time to order more stuff?
Oh, it is. It's just, do I need, like, do I need to order more? Do I want to, now I want to put, you know, put notice out to employees as well. So I need to staff it. So I start, you know, looking for staff, you know, February, March, April to, you know, have a guarantee. You know, so it just goes into my business plan of how many staff members I will need if, you know, if it's getting, I'm trying to groom these people to be here for a couple of years. You know, so versus like, hey, I have a job for one summer, but not four summers, you know, for high school and college. So it's, you know, there's, there's just a lot. It gives, you know, it just gives us more desire to invest more into it.
Excellent.
Can I just follow up on, hi, Matt. It's Bonnie. Thanks very much for your presentation. In, in addition to the asking for a one to three-year contract, I thought I heard you say that you also would like to expand services. Can you, if I heard you correctly, can you address that a little bit? Tell me what you mean.
Well, we, we're not looking to expand to other locations. It's just like services for that, for, for that locate, for the Roosevelt location. You know, do, is it more SUPs? Is there, you know, two beach access chairs, you know, things, things like that, more chairs? What number of chairs do I need? You know, is, is there a better rack system that could consolidate it better? You know, is there, do I make a better dry storage for the firewood, you know, inside or outside and the fire pits? How many we need to order? So you know, it's really just focusing on what I need for that location. It's, I'm not asking for, to do food and water and, or more stuff per se. We still just wanna stick with the floating mats, the kayaks, the beach chairs, the umbrellas and the stand-up paddle boards.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have days when you were, go ahead, Bonnie.
I was gonna say, the reason I wanna bring it, I, I brought it up is at one point there was a discussion of having food and drink and all that sort of thing. So I just wanted to see if that's what you were referring to.
No, I, I wanna stay as far from food and drink as possible, especially with COVID restrictions and it's just one less thing that we need to deal with. It's not, it's not in our game plan to go that route in business.
Matt, you, you were however able to leverage local businesses who, where parties wanted catering, correct?
Yes. Yeah. So numerous parties were catered. We, we drive everyone to catering or bring it themselves. We, we don't, you know, we, we say we bring the fun. They, you bring the food and drinks.
But my point there is that you had a, you had a residual benefit for other businesses.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's, there's about probably 10 different companies this summer that I know of catered the beach parties that we had. So local restaurant and some, you know, whoever they pick, they, they kinda, they, they ask us, they're like, hey, who do you recommend? I'm like, well, what kind of stuff do you want? And then I'm like, oh, these three restaurants are great for you. These two are good for you.
Right.
So we did have, catered parties down there.
Okay. Matt, did you, did, did you have period, I mean, you talked about maybe more mobility chairs and things like that. Did you have days when you were, when your, all your equipment was out?
Not everything. You know, it seems like one day we get hit with all the kayaks wanting to be rented. Another day it was all the, you know, we, we rarely all the, like the four access chairs were all out at one time. The mats were popular. They, you know, there was times that they were all out. So it's, it, it was really random. Every day was a little bit different. You know, I think once we ran out of the chairs, right around the holiday weekends.
So in the past, before you had this, you would have had to haul all that equipment out there on a daily basis. Is that right?
Yes.
So this, how many trips do you estimate that on a daily basis on a busy day you might have curtailed?
Well, if we went down there 10 times a day, so in the previous years, this is definitely, and then how many times we've turned people down just because we knew, they were like, they saw us go down there. We turned, we delivered something. We turned around to go to the other end of the beach. We're like, we can't be there for another two hours, guys. So this way, we don't, you know, we, we don't have to do those numerous trips. We, you know, before it was all reservations. We're like, hey, there's 10 trips. Now it's, we can even accept a few walk-ups.
Terrific. I have one, can I ask one question, please? Just came to mind. Matt, do you have any sense of how many people were using the beach, the Bay Beach, Roosevelt Inlet beach who rode their bikes to the beach and made arrangements with you to, you know, rent your equipment so they could enjoy the beach? Do you have any intel on that?
I, I don't have any exact numbers by any means, but I do know, like I, I can picture, you know, about five different groups that they biked every, you know, that was their thing. They, they biked from, say, Hawxai, this one family, you know, with their friends that were down for the weekend and they would always show up there. You know, there's another group that I can, as I ride up and down Bay Avenue, I'm like, oh, I know so and so is in town because their bikes were there with their little wagon on the back.
Right.
You know, Market Street's very popular. I see, you know, it's, it's, I know who's on the beach because I can see their bikes now. And whether, whether they're biking in from different parts of the town.
I see. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Tim. Didn't know you.
No, I was just saying, and those people you were just describing, Matt, were your, became your customers. They were renting from you. Is that correct?
Yeah, a lot of them have. Yes.
Good. Okay. As bikers, they're, I mean, they're riding their bikes to your destination and then parking their bikes and using the beach, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, Rob. Emery, did you have any changes or revisions you'd like to see to the, to the arrangement, to the contract?
You're, you're, you're off.
My gosh.
My gosh, the, the words of 2020, you're on mute. Um, so we do not have a contract. So I think what we probably need to do is, um, have Glenn work on a contract, have staff work with Matt, and then bring it back when it's ready.
Great. Well, I would, uh, Mayor, is a motion in order?
Yes.
I would, that we authorize Anne Marie to execute a contract for a one-year extension for Matt. Uh, it was, it being so controversial last year, but it turned out well, very well, but I, I rather like the idea of, of, of annual review. So my motion is to authorize Anne Marie to execute a contract with Matt for an additional year.
Is there, is there a second?
Well, I, I'd like to support that, but by, could we put some language in there that would allow him maybe to go for a second and third year if he meets certain expectations?
Let's see if there's a second first to the motion.
Okay.
This is what I thought we needed a second first before we discuss. Is there a second to the motion? I'll second it so we can get you to the discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Now let's have this discussion. Andrew, I think you have the floor first.
I guess what I was proposing is maybe an opt-out. So we, we give him later a two-year, maybe we give him a two-year and he can do something similar as he's doing now, which is to report out. And if he's not meeting the expectations of the agreement, at that point, we can, we can terminate, or we can just more simply say, yeah, you've met the expectations and, and we renew.
I would look at it as a friendly amendment.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea, actually. Uh, yeah. Do a two-year term with, uh, at the end of the next year, do a review, an update. And then, yeah, that's a great idea.
Cause there is no contract in place, correct?
No, there is not.
So we can draft the contract that has that.
Trial basis.
Expectations, these are, you know, or, or reasons for termination.
That can all be spelled out in the contract so that, uh, the idea that he would provide an annual report at the December meeting, that gives Matt ample time after he's closed down to bring us a report. Uh, and, uh, with the idea that he could have two-year contracts, subject to, uh, the conditions and providing a report, a satisfactory report. Rob, does that, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, it is.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Either withdraw it or amend the motion.
I'm not quite sure I understood that, Mayor. I accepted Andrew's suggestion, which I understand Tim did too, as a friendly amendment. So the motion would be as you now stated.
Okay. I hope that Janine has gotten the motion.
Sorry, Janine.
Can I say something before we vote? Matt, uh, I have no doubt that you are providing a, a great service and, and a popular one. But as, as, as I said last year, when we went through this, I, I really do oppose the commercialization of Lewis's beaches. And, and I see this as, as an example of that. So it's nothing against you or your enterprise, just as a matter of principle. I, I can't support this. So I'm, I'm going to vote against it. Um, but it has nothing to do with you or with any of, of what you're trying to do. I think you're doing a great job. It's, it's, it's just a vote on principle.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All opposed?
No.
Okay, now I'll vote in favor. So the motion, motion carries four to one. Thank you very much, Matt. Thank you very much. And we'll be back probably, I don't know whether January would be reasonable, Glenn, uh, and Anne Marie. Do you think we could pull together a contract for Matt by then or not? Pretty sure we.
Perhaps. We'll shoot for it, but, uh, yeah.
You can't do it at any parties this year for Christmas and New Year, so.
Listen, there's five kids in my house. Every night is a party, so.
Okay.
Need to come back to the council?
That was gonna be my question.
He wanted to come back to look at what the contract says?
I'm content to authorize Anne Marie to, and to work with Glenn on it.
Okay.
What the motion was, so.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, then we'll just, we don't have to bring it back. Okay. Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Have a good summer.
You got it. Thank you, guys.
Okay. All right. Moving now on to item H2 is presentation of possible action on the approval of the Lewis African-American Heritage Commission bylaws. We saw this, um, uh, earlier in July, and we had a couple of recommendations, and now it's back before us. Uh, Rob, you want to comment on this at all?
Yes, I think the recommendations have been accepted. So we're in good shape. I see the Secretary of the Commission is among our attendees. And I have no doubt she's interested in, in what we do. I think they're, um, they're well stated, and I would, I would move that we had approved them.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Great that this commission has developed their bylaws and is moving on. Thank you for your work, Rob. Uh, moving on then to item H3 is presentation of possible action on a a resolution to support a charter change to allow using state voter rolls for municipal elections. Uh, Rob, this was an idea you brought forth. We've had some discussion on it. It's back again. Um, you want to talk further about it?
Yes, we, we had our public hearing. Uh, this follows on the ordinance amendment that we did. And the, the purpose of this would, it's a couple of different things. One is cleanup, to streamline it a little bit. Uh, two other purposes. One is to, um, authorize the city to adopt by ordinance the state's voter registration system. And we heard, I think we heard Anne Marie say that would not be a, a big transition and would ultimately save her administrative time. And I think we heard Joan Reader, whom I see in the, among the attendees, or did, that she thought it was a good idea. No, I think Joan has, has left us.
No, she's still with us.
Oh, is she good?
Yeah.
But we've had the public hearing, so I assume the record is closed. So, and the third thing it does is just make a clarification of the people who are qualified to vote, because there were, it, an ambiguous term was used, and now we use the term domiciliaries. So it, uh, that's what the, the charter amendment would do, Mayor, and it's important that we act on it in time to get it to the General Assembly.
And as I understand it, this was an option to use it, not a requirement to use.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask a quick question on that domiciliary question? Rob, um, if I understand this correctly, the idea here is that we would use the, the list of voters, the role of voters developed by the state, right?
Right.
Okay, so does the state have this require, I mean, we could amend our charter, but does the state require domiciliary status in order to register to vote?
I don't know. I, I assume it doesn't because Dewey and Rehoboth allow non-domiciliaries to vote.
So how would we know that someone?
They're not on the state rolls.
That's right. They don't use the state rolls.
The state rolls are for people who are qualified to vote in a statewide election.
Thank you, ma'am.
Right. So how, that's what I thought. So how would we, how would the domiciliary requirement be put into effect?
Well, we know, and both the state and the city require ID in order to register or to vote. The ID would be a state-issued ID, and it would reflect your address. So.
That doesn't establish domiciliary status. You could still be a part-time resident.
Not, my understanding is not if you've told the DMV that your principal place of residence is where you give them your address.
Is that a requirement when you go on the state rolls?
I don't. The problem you're, the, the risk that you're pointing out, Bonnie, that somebody might show a, a driver's license that doesn't reflect their true primary residence is one we already have.
Well, well, no, actually what I'm getting, I don't, I personally don't recall when I signed up for Motor Voter, right, which is what we're talking about. I don't remember anything, any requirement other than I show my social security card, you know, I don't know, a bill from, from the house. I don't, I don't remember. I mean, maybe I filled out a form that I simply don't recall, but I'm, what I'm getting at is what is it, what, what, in fact, are the requirements for the state registration? I simply don't know.
Say again, please?
I said, I simply don't know.
Well, I can't cite to you chapter and verse, but as I recall, the state requires ID, just as the city requires ID. So that the situation is the same for the city and the state.
Well, I, I have to, I beg to differ. I mean, I think it's a little different when someone comes into Lewis City Hall and says, I live on Rodney, or I live on Grease Circle. I mean, I, I think that's a, there's, there's all kinds of ways that we generally know about people because it's such a small community. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I continue to be concerned about the, um, about the part-time issue. And the, the other thing that concerns me is my recollection of, of what happened after the last election was there hadn't been a, a number of elections in Lewis, and so the voter rolls, Lewis's voter rolls were considerably out of date. But, and that was, I thought that was the problem we were chasing. But my recollection from what was said at the public hearing on this issue is that the state rolls are in no better shape than Lewis's roles would be in terms of that particular issue. And so I guess what I'm, what I continue to be concerned about is whether, and I just brought this up last time about using BPW data or transfer tax data, is whether there isn't a better way to have a tighter, more current, uh, election role in-house than simply using the state's role that doesn't solve at least that one problem that I, I thought we had identified as a real problem with our roles.
And it was not the problem that we were chasing, at least from my point of view. The problem we were chasing was the terrific burden, administrative burden that we could otherwise escape of by adopting a uniform system. The requirements in the state statute for purging voter rolls are the same for the city and the state. So we don't gain anything. We don't lose anything in that respect by going to the state.
Is it a tremendous administrative burden, Anne Marie?
Um, well, in, in this election, I know Christine spent a lot of time working on the, the voter registration. Um, we, we did, because we hadn't had an election in, in so long. I think I, I'm less concerned about the administrative burden as it relates to staff as the number of people that we needed to turn away. Because they were registered to vote with the state, they live in the city, they showed up, and they weren't registered with the city. So I think it, it's really more about, making it easier for the voter.
Right, but that's, that's an educational issue, right? Is getting out the word to our residents that.
It is, but I, I mean, we did newspaper ads, we did email blasts, we did Facebook, and we did, we.
And how many did you have to turn away?
I don't know because that was the, the board election.
But do you have a sense was?
And, and I mean, some of them don't live in the city. I mean, if you live, you know, we had people like from senators who came to vote and they couldn't. So that's a different issue, but there were a number of people who were not registered in the city and therefore couldn't vote.
But we don't know the number.
No, I, do you want me to see if we can ask Joan?
I, I'm just trying to tease out how big a problem we have.
So Joan, can you answer that question?
Can you hear me, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, Joan.
I don't have a number, Bonnie, but I would just venture to say 10 to 20.
Okay.
But I, you know, I don't really have a number.
And those, those are 10 to 20 people who actually were Lewis citizens who had not registered to vote in Lewis.
Right. They didn't, just didn't understand.
I have a couple of questions if you, if it's okay, Bonnie.
Sure.
So I, I'll just say, I, I, I support this. Um, however, my question is, since the language says that we may use the rolls, what's the trigger? Uh, how, how do we inform year to year, whether we are going to use that or use a different system? What's the, what's the plan there?
From my point of view, Andrew, there's, there's actually not a plan going forward, except that if we want to do it, we need to pass an ordinance to accomplish that.
Okay.
To, to rethink, to take advantage of any new data we have before we take that step.
So it would have to come back before council, again, before a change was made.
Right.
Any other comments from the table? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move that we adopt the
resolution.
Resolution stated in item H2. Nope, H3.
H3, yeah. Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
Thank you, Andrew. The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Rob, Tim, you're, you're muted. I was.
Sorry about that. Aye.
Bonnie?
No.
Okay, okay. And I will vote against it as well. Uh, so it carries three to two. I have similar concerns to those expressed by Bonnie. I think, um, you know, I think there is an edge, it's more of an education issue than, than anything else. And I, so that's my concern. Moving on then.
Mayor, there's another item. I did alert people to this on the, by email. Glenn has advised me that a, a clerical change to the charter could be added to the resolution if, if we like. And the clerical change is just to clarify that when the council appoints some, uh, somebody to fill a council vacancy, that that person is deemed elected so that they would satisfy the criteria of the charter, which are stated in a number of different provisions, that a majority be of the elected members of the council. I think it was never meant to exclude anybody who was a legitimate voting member of the council, but rather to indicate that ex officio people weren't to be considered. But this is not urgent. And if there's any objection among any of the council members to adding that, which Glenn regards as clerical, I'm, I have no desire to push it. But if it, if it, uh, if there is no objection, I would suggest we do that. It'd be just to save ourselves time on another agenda.
I think in practice, it's always been handled that way, Rob. I, I've been on council long enough to remember when there was a resignation and there wasn't someone appointed. And certainly, uh, they were given all the courtesies of that an elected official and all the rights that an elected official was granted. So in practice, it's, it's always been handled that way.
That's what we thought. That's why it would be a clarification.
Yeah. So I'm not sure that, uh, there's any urgency to doing this, as you said.
All right, then I won't propose it.
Okay.
But Anne Marie, I would like to, it to go on a, a future agenda.
Yeah, we can put it on a future agenda. Okay, um, item H4, um, this presentation of possible action on the creation of a committee to make recommendations on the extension of the Chesapeake Utilities Franchise Agreement for natural gas. Uh, we had a very extensive presentation last month by, uh, Chesapeake regarding their expansion efforts and what, what they are doing to try to reach out to the community. We're nearing, as has been said earlier, the 10th anniversary of these contracts. Uh, and I think we would all like to see natural gas, um, more readily available to our residents and our businesses. In 10 years, they have managed to get to several communities, largely on the periphery of the city. We've had very limited penetration on the. We've had very limited penetration on the interior, the core of the, and none in the downtown business community. And I think that's a concern to many people and many businesses that I've heard from. So I think the establishment of a committee to work on recommendations that we could work, that we could work with Chesapeake on. Anne Marie and I have met regularly along with Presley and Darren Gordon on methods to expand natural gas into the city and into the core of downtown. We're still, we're still working on some of those things, but the, I think there has to be a better coordination with Chesapeake and what they're offering and what we are doing, particularly as we look at street improvements like, or like what's going on on Pilot Town Road. And there was a disconnect there, so natural gas is not being installed on Pilot Town Road at the time that this wharmin is being installed. And so that, I think there's opportunity for us to have a better pickup here. So I've, I've spoken with both Bonnie and Tim, and I would like to ask both of them to form, be on a committee to come up with recommendations to bring back to us and that we could work with Chesapeake on as we move forward.
I would, we, we approve those nominations.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, as I said, I think all of us would like to see natural gas more readily available. There's plenty of opportunity here. And hopefully, we can get something going. Item H5, this presentation of possible action to oppose environmental protection chapter of the Lewis Municipal Code covering gas-powered landscaping equipment and the current littering and outdoor smoking chapters. Rob, this was your initiative. I know we've talked about it. And we had, again, a rather extensive presentation last month. And when we heard from Ed Fleming regarding what the status is of, of gas power to cycle engines. And he did make a comment which, about seeing if there were mufflers available. I did hear back from him today. He has not had any information back from his supplier regarding the availability of mufflers that could be put on those. So this is a topic, I think what we learned from Ed's presentation and from the information we received from Tom Engel of Double E and Mike Schimmel of Bellaterra is that this is probably battery-operated, successfully battery-operated gas leaf blowers are probably three to five years out. And the technology's not there, although many of our landscapers are already using battery-powered chainsaws, trimmers, and edgers. So. You have comment here, Rob?
Well, let me start by just making a point of parliamentary procedure. I, I talked with Glenn about this. I'm not sure it's necessary, but we know that to properly consider something, you need a motion and a second.
Right.
And in, under Robert's rules of order, a second doesn't indicate agreement with the motion. It only indicates the view that it should be discussed. And I think Glenn reflected an appreciation of that when he seconded a motion just earlier today.
Correct.
You know, he'll second just to hear it.
Right.
So what I would like to do in anticipation that there will be an amendment, I would like to move adoption of the proposal so that we can, I hope, attract a second and then consider any amendment that's offered.
Okay.
So I, I would move that we adopt the environmental protection resolution as, as proposed in the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to second, so we can move to a discussion on it.
Let me frame this a little bit, because there's a lot of language in this ordinance, but there's really not much, there's only one bit of, of, I think, controversial substance. The, the chap, the ordinance tries to do a couple of things. We had a different no-smoking ordinance and a different litter ordinance, and these go into quality of life, where the environment of the city. And so what I have tried to do is to clean those up and move them into a, a new chapter about the environment. And to that, I propose as the first section of the new chapter, the ordinance about gas-powered landscaping equipment. And the section or subsection 95-1B states that there will be a cutoff date for landscaping equipment that's gas-powered other than lawnmowers and leaf blowers, and then a, a later cutoff date for leaf blowers. But there has been discussion since that ordinance got posted, and I would like to defer to anybody who would like to offer an amendment to that, especially to that particular subsection.
Rob, I'll take that one on. So in, in general, I'm, I'm supportive of this ordinance. There, there are a couple of things I'd like to see different. One, in your ordinance, you mentioned gasoline-powered lawnmowers. And, and I'd just like to remove that. I just don't think the technology, the vision is there to include lawnmowers. The other thing that I'd like to do is to include the, the weed eaters within that 2025 effective date that you've put there. So what I'm saying is I'd like to remove mowers altogether. I just don't think it's realistic, we, in terms of the, the knowledge of how they, they can be battery-powered. And then, as I said, to include the effective dates for the trimmers to match what you've proposed for the leaf blowers. The weed, the weed trimmers, the weed eaters.
Can I ask a stupid question? What's, just so we all are using the same terminology, what's the difference between a weed eater and a trimmer?
Well, I'm, I meant to distinguish between a hedge trimmer, like a, something that trims your bushes, as opposed to something that trims your, your weeds.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I was trying to that, thank you for that clarifying.
Same confusion, Bonnie.
Yeah.
Because Ed, Ed indicated that the trimmers were there in, as far as I recall in the public hearing, Ed seemed indicate that the trimmer technology was decent enough in terms of holding a charge. The, the hedge trimmers, not the, not the weed trimmers.
He also said edgers were there too.
Right. And he described, in fact, he described the trimmers as being excellent. They held a charge for a full seven to eight hour day, workday, is the way he described it.
Yeah, I thought he said the trimmers and the chainsaws were, the battery technology was there, but the the blowers and the, and the the, the lawnmowers not so much. And can I assume that when we say blowers, those, that, I think a blower also has the capacity to vacuum. So we're talking about that, that, that whole suite of functionality, I guess.
Of equipment. One of the things I noted is, I think one of the references that has been made is to Maplewood, New Jersey's ordinance. And I looked up their ordinance and they have a decibel rate. They don't go, they don't specific, have it rated by gas or how it's powered. They have a decibel rating in theirs. The other thing that they have in there, which is kind of interesting, is they, they're prohibited from May 1st until the 15th of October every year, not in the other months of the year. Recognizing probably that their fall and winter, or fall leaf drop is significant, and it's something that more highly-powered piece of equipment can be utilized on. So I don't know if those are things that we want to think about in this, in this amendment, or, or as an amendment to this. But there, there are certainly things that are in other municipalities' legislation.
Well, let me see if I first understood the, got the amendment that, that Andrew is moving. And Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard was that it would now read, effective on December 31, 2022, handheld gasoline-powered landscaping equipment other than leaf blowers and hedge trimmers shall not be operated within the city. Effective on December 31, 2025, gasoline-powered leaf blowers and hedge trimmers shall not be operated within the city. Which leaves lawnmowers entirely out of the ordinance. Is that?
That is, that's how I stand it, because I, I just don't think lawnmowers, I don't, I don't think they're there.
And did the rest of it reflect your, your amendment?
Yes, it did.
Then I second it.
Can I make a couple of comments? Does anybody else want to go first, or?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Are, are you going to discuss the proposed amendment to the motion? Because I think if there's discussion on the amendment to the motion, you could have that discussion, because you're going to have to vote on that proposed amendment.
Correct.
Yes, I'm, I'm talking about the, the, yeah, the, the package.
Gotcha.
A couple of things. First of all, I'm a little, this is minor, but I'm a little concerned about the name of this chapter. I'm concerned we have so many groups working both in the governmental and otherwise on, on our environmental challenges, that I'm a little concerned about calling this chapter Environmental Protections. You know, we have, we have all kinds of problems facing us in terms of groundwater and stormwater and sea level rise and all the rest of it. I, I, so that's just minor, but I, I just throw that out there as a potential concern.
What's your suggestion, Bonnie? What would you, do you have a suggestion for another name?
Thought of maybe nuisance prohibitions, or, I don't know, we all have noise ordinance that can work with that.
I'll tell you the reason I think it's, it's proper there, because Ted, Ted brought up decibels, but for me, it's not about the decibels, it's about the two-stroke engine. So then it becomes an air quality issue. And then the next thing I'd like to look to move forward on as a town, and we're, again, probably five years, maybe more from there, is the herbicides and pesticides that we're using on our lawns. And hopefully, this is something that we can also put in that chapter. Because I think that's a bigger issue, frankly, is the, is the runoff from the herbicides and pesticides that we're putting in our yards.
Oh, oh, I agree with you. It's
But this is just a chapter.
Right. The, the only concern I have is possible.
Here's a chapter we created, and we can continue to, to add into it.
Right, right. All, all I was saying is that there's a lot of environmental challenges that require protections, and this, this is a small subset of that. So that, that was mainly, I mean, it's minor. I just throw it out there because I don't, to avoid confusion. And I wish I had a better name for it, but I don't. Um. The second thing, and then I'll get to my more general point, but the second thing is I would propose that we take out homeowner-owned equipment here. I mean, I think that Rob's, the, the thrust of where Rob was going with this was commercial use. I'm, I'm not inclined to compel someone to sell their, their equipment that they use on their own lawn. I just, I just don't think that's appropriate. And then I'll just throw that, I mean, I'm not going to oppose this thing, but I'll just throw out there that what I took away from, from the public hearing was a great deal of enthusiasm on the part of the commercial landscaping industry to go to battery. I mean, what seemed pretty clear to me was that wherever battery technology had gotten to the point that the piece of equipment was feasible with a battery, they had jumped on it and done it voluntarily. So I really don't think this is necessary. What I would propose as a, a possible alternative is, is to ask staff to monitor this, and if for some reason there appeared to be a slip between where the industry was going and what we were seeing around here, then we could act on it, but I don't know, I, I hate to put in things that we don't really need, and I just, I mean, we're talking about something five years from now or two years from now. And, and so again, I, I just, I don't think that we should be telling, you know, a homeowner that they have to scrap their whatever it may be, their hedge clipper, if it's not battery-operated by December 20, 31st, 2022. If you want to make this applicable to commercial entities, okay, but I, I don't think it's reasonable to, to do this to our, to our citizens. My view.
I'm going to make a correction, offer a correction to what something Bonnie just said, and I'm going to make a statement. Correction is that the, specifically as far as the hedge trimmers go, you know, this code, this ordinance, the way I read it, this proposal, it, it would apply to, or it would encourage the adaptation of battery-powered as well as electric plug-in equipment. And many hedge trimmers that are used by residents today, specifically hedge trimmers I'm speaking of, are in fact plug-in electric type, and they've been available and on the market for many, many years. And so that's, I think that's the kind of equipment that most people, most residents use when they are out trimming their shrubs. They're not using gas-powered hedge trimmers.
Well, then.
But the other thing that, pardon?
All I was going to say is if that's true, then specifically exempting homeowners gets to the same place, because as you've said, they, they aren't using those anyway.
Right. Well, I just wanted to make sure you understood that they were, yeah, they would not be, most homeowners would not be penalized by it being encouraged by this ordinance to use electric or battery-powered equipment. But the one thing that I do like about this ordinance is I think it shows, it shows that Lewis, it shows the city council is willing to take a stand and draw a line in the sand. And it's showing that we have, we have a concern, we have a concern about the impact of this kind of gas, gasoline-fired, gasoline-powered equipment, and we'd like to move towards a more green community. And I think that's an important message to send. And to encourage our residents accordingly.
I think it's an important message to send. Tim, I completely support that idea. I just, I, I question whether, you know, knowing the seasonality of this thing, and knowing that other ordinances and other municipalities have a period when they allow it, do we want to make this completely restrictive on a, on a year-round basis?
Mayor, I would point out that what you're suggesting is that the period when the equipment, particularly leaf blowers, are likely to be operated the most and generating the most pollution and noise is what you would exempt, which I think is not exactly in line with, with what we're trying to get at.
I, I understand that. I'm just looking at what we heard from, the amount of time it would require for them to do other things. In, until you get to 25, maybe there's, maybe you allow it, you know, allowed use, maybe you've changed that, your ordinance a little bit to, to get to allowing, recognizing the seasonality of, of the issue for a period of time as, as the battery-powered equipment ramps up.
I thought that's what Andrew suggested. Am I mistaken? I thought, and, someone suggested, I thought.
Five years seem, I mean, to me, just five years seems like within the window of what with the feedback we were getting where the, where the technology will be. And to the point that was made earlier, maybe, maybe we look at that and we see if the needle's not moving incrementally to where the, the battery lives are improving, then, then maybe we have to change the ordinance. But I think to, to Tim's point, we need to put it out there that this is something that we, we value as a community, and it also puts them on notice that hopefully the, the immediate result is that people will go, start going out and getting battery-powered, and then we're, we're already sort of starting the process. Because the other thing, the reason I wanted the five years too, is just, I don't want people dumping all their equipment in the landfill all at once. Hopefully, the five, the five years gives some time to kind of phase them out as we go.
I agree.
Yeah.
Hear me, we vote on the amendment?
We can vote on. Uh, we can vote on that particular amendment. Is, so, all in favor?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on? Can you, just for me and Janine, what are we, what are we voting on?
Amendment to eliminate lawn mowers.
May I read it?
Yeah, yeah.
The amendment would alter the proposal that's in the agenda to state in section 95-1B, instead of what's in there now, effective on December 31, 2022, handheld gasoline-powered landscaping equipment other than leaf blowers and weed and hedge trimmers shall not be operated within the city. Effective on December 31, 2025, gasoline-powered leaf blowers and hedge trimmers shall not be used within the city. Should not be operated within the city. And I think Glenn, you have that.
What happened to leaf blowers again? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm dense. I'm, I'm looking right at, and I couldn't follow you. Twenty, what's, what, what, do it this way, Rob. What's, what is banned as of December 31st, 2022? And what is banned as of December 31st, 2025?
As of December 31, 2022, handheld gasoline-powered landscaping equipment other than leaf blowers and hedge trimmers.
No, other than, other than leaf blowers and weed trimmers.
Was it weed?
Weed, weed, yeah, weed whackers.
Weed whackers is what it's called here, right? Or weed eaters, weed whackers.
I, I misunderstood, Andrew, that, I thought you were changing that from weed to hedge, but my mistake. Then effective, effective on December 31, 2025, gasoline-powered leaf blowers and weed trimmers shall not be operated within the city.
Okay, so lawn mowers are completely out of it?
Correct.
Right.
If, if you say landscaping equipment, a land, a lawn mower is considered landscaping equipment.
But you don't walk around with it in your hands.
Right, it's not handheld.
Well, but a leaf blower doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily walking around with your hand or back.
That's right.
It's handheld.
Yeah, but it's managed, it's controlled by your, it's directed by your hand, correct?
So, so is a lawn mower.
I think you, I think you might just.
Well, but you're not, you're not carrying it.
But add a, add another, another section, which, just C, which says this, this provision does not cover lawn mowers. If that's what you want to do.
That's, that's fine. I've got no objection to that, Andrew, do you?
I, I have, I have no objection. And to Ted's point, it may make more sense to just to sort of delineate that lawn mowers are separate, they're not, they're exempt altogether.
Yeah, can I, can I ask that, that, that staff, Emory, could you put something in your calendar, you know, six months before the first and the second of these prohibitions going? Just to, just to make sure that the technology is there. It probably will be, but we don't want to, we don't want to have a law in the books that requires, you know, we're looking at, well.
Two years, two to five years.
Two to five years. I, I just want to have some kind of check to make sure that this, this doesn't, this, this, this stays tied to what's realistically possible, given the technology.
So I gather, Mayor, you're moving an amendment to the amendment that would say, that would add a sentence that says, this provision does not apply to lawn mowers.
I'm adding, yes, suggesting that you consider adding a section, uh, uh, to 95-1A B and then adding C, that lawn mowers are not included in this provision.
Or not, I think it would make more sense as part of B, a third sentence to B.
Okay, if you want to put it that way, it's as long as it's in there. Otherwise, somebody's going to interpret it differently.
Agreed.
Then I'll second that amendment to the amendment.
May I ask one quick question? And this is for clarification. Where, where does the equipment of, uh, chainsaws fit into this, Rob?
That would be covered by December 31st, 2022. They would not be permitted within the city.
Can, can I ask one other question? In subsection A, it says policy. It is the policy of the city to reduce greenhouse emissions that contribute to climate change. Do we have any other ordinances or rules that, do, do we in fact have such, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't, but do we in fact have such a policy? And if so, is it our, does it have any substance anywhere else in the code?
Are you asking Glenn, or are you asking me, or are you asking?
I'm asking any, well, I guess I'll ask you because you wrote that it was the policy.
There's lots of purpose provisions throughout the code.
Right. So I would think that this establishes the policy.
Okay, so just to be clear, I mean, again, I'm, I'm not against it, but we are now, for the first time apparently, declaring in this lawn mower section, or whatever you want to call it, that it's the policy of the city to reduce greenhouse emissions that contribute to climate change. So just so you know, gentlemen, that's something we're now saying we're doing. So that's fine, but I think we should be conscious of articulating what could be seen as a significant new policy.
Right.
So Mayor, may we have a vote on the amendment to the amendment?
Sure, all in favor.
Why?
Hi.
Before we, before we completely vote on this, this ordinance, I'm, I'm wondering if we should look at line 97, which has to do with sweeping litter into the gutters. We encourage people to sweep leaves into the gutter so we can collect them by the city? Does that create a dichotomy there?
It may, Mayor. This is an old ordinance.
No, that's why I'm asking. There's, there's another one, line 115, where we talk about litter in sewers. And we say, no person shall show or deposit, throw or deposit litter into any sanitary or storm sewer. And are, shouldn't we also be talking about liquids?
Mayor, if you want to make amendments after the public, I mean, if you want to raise these points after we've had a public hearing, and this has been discussed at previous meetings, for the purpose of delaying the ordinance.
I'm not delaying the ordinance, I'm just asking questions.
If you have a specific suggestion for an amendment to the ordinance, that would, I think, be a good thing.
Well, I think that we may want to consider, again, 97, you know, exempt doing something with leaves, whether it's, you know, recognizing the leaf thing. Or, and F, and, and 115, the idea of sweeping, dumping liquids into the sewers. Those are just two comments.
Do you have a specific amendment?
A specific amendment would be to amend that, that the one, the, at line 97, to address leaves, saying that leave, leaf gathering or leaf collection in the fall would be allowed. And line 115, I would say litter and/or liquids, litter or liquid, litter solid or liquid into the sewer. That's all I would suggest.
I'm sure that's a reasoned suggestion. I, I, Glenn, did you get it?
I don't have it all yet. Now, can I hear, can I hear that one more time? To line 97.
For 97, could we add at the end of line 101 that, um, raking leaves or depositing leaves at the curb line for city pickup is exempt from this?
Provision.
Provision.
Yeah, I thought we told people not to put leaves into the gutter. I thought we told them to put them at the front of their properties.
I think you're right.
We.
We tell them to take, to put them at the curb.
Yeah.
So the distinction here is to the curb or in the curb?
Right.
Yeah, in or, in or to, yeah.
Say, is Rick still here? Yeah, Rick. Rick, I just unmuted you. Where do we, where do people normally put their leaves? I see him a lot of times in the gutter.
Me too. He's still muted.
Is he muted?
Yeah.
I don't know why he's.
And even if people take them to the curb, frequently they end up over the curb because of wind or what have you.
I mean, so from a logistics standpoint, if they don't take them far enough, it's very hard for our equipment to get them without our guys getting out and, um, and having to, to, you know, rake them further. So maybe Rick's taking a break. Maybe he dozed off, I don't know. But, um, what, the website says, we tell people to the curbside. We didn't say which side of the curb.
So, okay.
They're not in the gutter.
Where are we? Are we waiting for Rick?
Well, he's not coming on, so I think the language that Anne Marie suggested with, you know, is acceptable. And then I think I, in, in item, on line 115, I would just say litter in sewers. I would just say litter, liquid or solid in sewers.
Okay.
That'd be good.
That's a good one. Can I go back to my, uh, chainsaws? Rob, did, I, I'm sorry if I'm out of order on this question. I apologize because I'm really not sure how many amendments we have in front of us at this point in time.
A lot.
A lot, right. But did I understand you say, Rob, that the chainsaws would have a sunset of December 31st, 2022? Is that correct?
As, as it's now written, yes.
I see. Can I propose an amendment?
Absolutely.
All right. Would you consider a friendly amendment to extend the, the date for gas, gasoline chainsaws to the termination, the end date of 2025? That was, is the same date that was used for the other equipment?
Well, the, the reason for the date for the other equipment was that the technology is not there yet. Somebody's not muted, but anyway. My understanding is that the technology for chainsaws is there already.
That's what Ed said.
For battery-powered chainsaws, for contractor-duty jobs. And steel has a very fine battery-powered chainsaw that is good for clearing dead, dead trees after storms. So I don't think we have the same concern there that we do with leaf blowers.
I see.
It's worth at the hardware store up in New Hampshire, where I just was, it was all gas-powered. Because, look, gas-powered is more, it's, it's, it simply is more powerful than battery. But if I understand what you're saying, Rob, and thank you for raising this, Tim, we're basically saying, because the technology is there, we're going to force you to get a battery, a, a, a battery, now we're talking about chainsaws, chainsaw on or before December 31st, 2022.
One of the amendment is, or the point of the, the whole proposal is to reduce the air pollution and hearing damage that is done by gasoline-powered equipment.
Right, but what we heard, what we heard at the public hearing was that when, at least in the commercial world, and this is why I keep bringing up this thing about the homeowners, when the, when the battery technology is available, they go, they go to it because they prefer it as well.
We heard that.
The other thing that Ed said, Bonnie, excuse me, was he also said that there was no difference between residential product and commercial product. He made that very clear. And in fact.
No, I don't.
I went back.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just talking about the difference between gas-powered and battery.
Right. So what I'm saying is, is that Ed, as a commercial vendor, would be buying it, you know, into that product line. And he's assured us that he's getting satisfactory, more than satisfactory results by buying, right?
Right, so.
The product that's already out there.
Absolutely. So that's why without any ordinance from the city council of Lewis, they're already making that change. All I'm saying is that we, everybody should understand that we're basically saying here is that you, if you, if you are hairy homeowner and you've got a gas-powered chainsaw, you got to put it in the trash on December 31st, 2022.
Unless you vote, you go with my amendment and we extend it out to 2025.
Unless you, your amendment to go to 2025?
On chainsaws.
On chainsaws. Just chainsaws. Pardon, please?
So where are we with your amendment?
I'll, I'll second whatever he talked about.
Rob, did you capture what Tim had said in your changes?
Yes, he wanted to add, I think Glenn, it's more important that you capture it.
Yeah, so, so what I have now with where we currently sit, subsection B of 95, 95-1B would say, effective on December 31st, 2022, handheld gasoline-powered landscaping equipment other than leaf blowers and weed eaters shall not be operated within the city. Effective December 31st, 2025, gasoline-powered leaf blowers, comma, weed eaters, comma, and we would be adding chainsaws, what the amendment would be here, should not be operated within the city. Then we finish with gasoline-powered lawn mowers are exempt from this section.
Glenn, I think you've got it, except that in the first sentence, you need, when it says other than leaf blowers and weed trimmers, you would need to add other than leaf blowers, chainsaws and weed trimmers.
Got it. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's better.
If it were.
Right.
That amendment is accepted.
May I offer one final amendment? And this actually, this is in subsection A. So you needn't worry about subsection B. Uncomfortable with a bald statement that is the policy of the city to reduce greenhouse emissions that contribute to climate change. Not that I disagree with it, but it's a very, very unambiguous statement. And all I'd suggest is that we insert, is the policy of the city of Lewis, where feasible to reduce greenhouse emissions that contribute to climate change, or something like that, or where reasonable, some kind of wording like that. Because otherwise, I, I just foresee, it, it's such a a naked statement that I think it needs a little bit of softening.
And I'll second Bonnie's amendment.
At least it was in subsection A.
Should that, should that say, we're feasible? Should that say consistent with technology, instead of saying we're feasible?
No, I, I think feasible is consistent with technology.
Okay.
I mean, I, if you want to make that motion.
No, I think, I think we've spent enough.
Killed Andrew off. Oh, there he is.
What was that?
He disappeared for a minute. A victim of a chainsaw massacre.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend 95-1A. Glenn, did you capture that amendment?
So 95-1A would say, policy, it's the policy of the city, comma, where feasible would be what is added, comma, to reduce greenhouse emissions, and then the rest of what's there.
Yeah.
All right.
I should mention that in subsection B, where, I, I want to be clear that I'm using the term weed eaters instead of weed trimmers, because that's what's used above.
Someone in the chat said that string trimmer might be the right term.
Marty, Marty. I think actually it's a better term.
That's what I call mine.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think Marty, she's, she's part of the Parks and Rec Committee, so I'm going to take her word for it.
Marty knows.
Also, or socially acceptable, so.
All right.
Is it used other, elsewhere? I, I don't know, Councilperson Morgan, do you know if it's used, used other places in the ordinance that is gonna give us issues if we go with, what, what was the term that was just used?
Well, I.
String.
String trimmer, but I don't think that's quite what we're talking about because, um, string trimmers are low-power, they, they're not really that effective. And, um, but I've got a machine that, that has a blade or a string, which you swap back and forth. So it, it functions as a. well, I mean weed whacker, but is an understood term. But I don't think string trimmer is quite comprehensive enough. That's fine.
Should we both use both terms? If you use two terms, then it indicates that there's a difference between them and.
I don't, I don't think we need that. So I'm finding string trimmer.
Right.
You are going string trimmer. Which means that you'll have to revise the in the in 95 one, for the purposes of this section, gasoline powered landscaping equipment shall mean gasoline powered lawnmowers, leaf blowers, instead of weed eaters, that will now say.
Weed trimmers.
String trimmers.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And it will emit lawnmowers, Glenn.
Well, it doesn't need to because 95 dash one B will exempt them.
Exactly.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
Okay. We made all the revisions we're going to make.
Say what I have and then maybe.
Oh, I've got a few more.
All right.
I'm kidding. Go ahead.
So here's what I have. I have now that the preamble to section 95 one is going to say for the purposes of this section, gasoline powered landscaping equipment shall mean gasoline powered lawnmowers, leaf blowers, string trimmers, trimmers, chainsaws, and other machines that are used to maintain lawns and landscaping. Subsection A would then read policy is the policy of the city where feasible to reduce greenhouse emissions that contribute to climate change, gasoline engines emit large quantities of pollutants into the air, including carbon dioxide, hydrocarbons, and nitrous oxides degrading the air quality and contribute to noise pollution and hearing loss. Subsection B would say effective December, on December 31st, 2022, handheld gasoline powered landscaping equipment, other than leaf blowers, chainsaws, and string trimmers shall not be operated within the city, effective on December 31st, 2025. Gasoline powered leaf blowers and string trimmers shall not be operated within the city. Gasoline powered lawnmowers are exempt from this section. Then at line 101, there'd be a new final sentence indicating depositing leaves at the curb, at the city curb shall be exempt from this subsection. And then at line 115, we'll insert litter or solid, it'll say litter, comma, liquid or solid, comma, in sewers. And then the rest of that provision would, would continue. That's what I have is the amendments.
I didn't hear in 95 dash one B that chainsaws in both the first and second sentence. Other than chainsaws in the first sentence and included in the second sentence.
Okay, so that should be effective on December 31st, 2022. Or should I say, you're saying right at the beginning, other than chainsaws?
Other than, other than chainsaws and the other things that are specified.
Okay.
And then in the second sentence, it would say effective 2025. And then it would have that, chainsaws would be in the list.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah. Get it?
So rather than try to untangle all the amendments to amendments, maybe we can have a motion to adopt what you just read.
I think that's what you need to do now. We've gotten so many, we've got partial motions, some with seconds, some with approval. I think the only thing we can really do is.
So I move to table all previous motions and to adopt what Glenn just read as an amendment to the proposal that's on the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Andrew, thank you. All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving then on to item H six, is presentation of possible action regarding an ordinance to amend article I of chapter 197 zoning of the municipal code of the city of Lewis, Delaware, section 197, and it should say 73, not 74, relating to the fill in flood, in the floodplain. We have had a meeting on this. Janelle's with us. Janelle, you want to talk to us about that a little bit?
I'd be happy to. This came from something the commission, the council asked the commission to look into. A subcommittee was formed and the planning commission made a recommendation to make the amendments regarding fill on the floodplain. Planning Commission held a public meeting and made a recommendation and council held their public hearing. And this is now awaiting a decision. I will let you know that we did receive some, because we're dealing with floodplain regulations, we have received word from FEMA that in our state friends at Denrick, that this might be a good idea. They had some concerns with the work report. And then this should go to FEMA for review to make sure there's no issues with FEMA, even though they are supportive of the fact that it's becoming more stringent. They just want to make sure that there are no concerns with, it doesn't impact any other section of the floodplain regulations that could be impacted by FEMA.
So. Go ahead, Jim. I was just to say, Janelle, so would that review from FEMA come before we take action tonight? Is that what you're suggesting?
If you would like it to, if not, we can, we can send it to FEMA after the fact, but typically if we want to make sure. And again, this was late information that we just received, is that they would like to just review it. The amendment by FEMA, just to make sure it doesn't affect any other section of the floodplain ordinance.
Sure.
Yeah.
Janelle, about how long does that kind of review take? We know, I mean, there may.
My guess is a couple of months. I honestly, that's my best guess.
So if, if we passed it and then we sent it to FEMA and they came back and said, well, you know, there's this problem or that problem, we could always amend it.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Anne Marie, did you have a comment? You were about to say something.
Nope. I was just reading.
Okay. So we have two options here. We can either adopt this amendment or this ordinance as it is written, recognizing that we may have to come back and amend it, or we can wait for FEMA's reaction to this or comments and then adopt it.
Bonnie, do you have any thoughts on which, given what you said, which is a better way to go in your opinion?
Did you say Bonnie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's better to get it on the books sooner rather than later. I think the chances that, that in no, basically a no net loss provision will run afoul of something at FEMA. I wouldn't, I mean, I'm no expert on FEMA, but I wouldn't think so. And if it does, I feel quite confident that FEMA will come back to us with very specific explanations as to why. And therefore amending this will be pretty, pretty easy. I mean, so I think it's actually, I mean, much, much like Rob said that it's important, or Tim said, I've forgotten who said it, that it was important to, maybe it was you, Andrew, to say that, you know, we were against hydrocarbons and noise and all that. I think it's important to say that we're, we're on board and it's important to the city of Lewis to, to control the use of fill in, in the floodplain. I mean, there's been a lot of work done on this. We have the unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. So I guess my druthers would be to go ahead with it. And if we have to fix it later, we'll have very specific, very specific places for doing so.
Okay.
Thanks, Bonnie. You know, I had a question.
Question.
I'm sorry. I just had a second question just in regards to. Yeah, there was a comment by Danielle Swallow regarding whether we were taking into consideration sea level rise in this. And it didn't seem to. So I just wanted to, if you could comment on why or why not you decided that to go that route.
So the subcommittee really recognized the fact that there is actually a sea level rise subcommittee. And they're doing a lot of work on how to address sea level rise within the city. And they left some of that information to that subcommittee and knowing that this will all work together when things all come, are come before the council for review and approval.
Does that mean that the floodplain ordinance might be revised in light of the sea level rise subcommittee's work?
Actually, later on your agenda, I believe there's something about, oh, that's actually on the planning commission agenda for Wednesday. Sorry. Got a couple of meetings tonight and lots about floodplains. The planning commission is actually working on amendments to the floodplain regulations currently. So back to question about FEMA, it might be by the time that gets before a decision for public, for council, that we might actually have FEMA comments regarding this item as well.
And that may be one of the comments that come back from FEMA is that you have to require further amendments due to the floodplain or due to the sea level rise.
Right. And the sea level rise is they're looking at a complete section address, it's called resiliency, because they recognize it's more than just sea level rise. So there's a bunch of items they're looking at to address regarding sea level rise. And they're taking a very big picture look at how it could be impact to the city.
Do you have any idea, Janelle, how long it will be before that, that subcommittee makes its recommendations to the planning commission? And we can expect to see?
I would say.
Just a projection.
Early to mid next year. Because they have, they've had a workshop and they have gotten comments back from agencies. So the subcommittee will be getting back together the beginning of next year to finalize portions of it. They recognize they're going to do it in, in sections because it's a lot to take on and they want to get certain sections moving forward to start addressing sea level rise. So I would say early to mid next year, you'll, you'll see something.
Uh huh. Okay. So at this point, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I'll move that we adopt the, the the new language to section 197 dash 73, D as in dog, five, D as in dog as proposed.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay. All right. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Rob, you're, we can't hear you. You're not on mute. We can't hear you. You must be sitting too far back from your speaker or your mic.
Who are you talking to?
You. We can't hear you.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much. No objection. Then moving on to item H seven, is presentation of possible action regarding amending the zoning map for parcels Sussex County tax map 335 dash 4.20 dash 189 and 190 dash 00 located at 203 Savannah Road, Cape Penelope Drive to revert the zoning classification from R3 back to general commercial.
May I make a suggestion on this? It would be, I've talked with Anne Marie and Glenn about this. It would be anomalous if we, if we acted on this item and then acted differently on the comp plan amendment after the public hearing. So may I suggest that we defer this until the meeting at which we address the comp plan amendment?
Which is the.
Probably January.
It's probably January if we can get the hearing that first week.
Yeah, exactly. We are, we're early in, we're early in, in January with our meeting on the 11th. So you may not be able.
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, we could defer action on this until then. Is that. I beg your pardon?
That would avoid a possible inconsistency in our, in our decisions.
Okay.
Does deferring it have any negative effect on the applicant? Okay. Then I think Rob's right. I mean, why not do it all at once? Glenn, do you have any opinion on this?
Well, historically, when we have these sorts of things, it, it, it does make sense to take up the comp plan amendment and the zoning change at the same time just to avoid what councilperson Morgan is saying. If something were to go wrong at the state level with the comp plan amendment, we have no expectation that it will, but if it were, then you'd have a decision here changing the zoning without the comp plan getting in line with it. So it makes sense to have all the ducks lined up so you can vote on it together.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I just had some comment is Bonnie, as so long as it doesn't have a deleterious effect on the applicant, I'm, I'm okay deferring it. But if, if, if we know, if we know that it does, then I'd prefer to act on it sooner.
I don't think that, I don't think it's going to matter at this point.
The suggestion, the suggestion would be that we defer until January, that meeting, correct? Our regular meeting?
Can't do that until we have, until after we have the public hearing.
Right. Defer it until you have the item on the agenda with the comprehensive plan, that they are both on the agenda at the same time for decision.
I apologize. I toned out. Okay.
Which is actually the next, possible action resolution to set a public hearing is the next item on the agenda. So.
Right.
Okay, so everyone's in agreement. We'll just defer action on item H seven until we have that, until after we have that public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Then moving on to new business, item I one, presentation of possible action or resolution to set a public hearing to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map to the zoning map of, and change the properties located at 203 Savannah Road, Sussex County tax map 335 dash 4.20 dash 189.00 and 190.00 from residential to commercial land use, from general commercial land use. And Anne Marie had floated some dates earlier today suggesting I, we want to try and get this done in time for our January consideration, we would need to hold this public hearing on January 6th or so.
Right. And, and those dates, based on the responses that I've received, were both fine.
So if we're looking at January 6th, that's a Wednesday, we could set that hearing at 6 o'clock, if that works for you. Motion to that effect.
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will have this public hearing then on January 6th at 6 o'clock. Okay.
Okay.
Moving on to item I two, is a presentation of possible action on a waiver request for relief from the point 05 slope of the storm drain pipe located in White's Pond Meadows subdivision. We've had this, we've talked about this before and here it is to consider. And Charlie's on with us. Charlie, you want to talk to us about this? Charlie, you're muted.
Okay. So White's Pond Meadows. Right now, the code requires a, it's just one small line item in the code that requires 0.5% slope on stormwater pipe, which is abnormal to the, the typical design for stormwater drainage pipe. The standard is three feet per second. Some places it's 2.5 feet per second. I've always used three feet per second and that's what I designed to. And it, to get, to achieve three feet per second velocity through the pipe, to scour the bottom of the pipe in a stormwater pipe, it all depends on the pipe material, the pipe diameter and the slope of the pipe. And that's all of what, the part of what GMB reviews when we review, review the plans for stormwater, at least the storm drainage system to make sure that's all in effect and that we get three feet per second. I just did receive the final construction plans, maybe 10 days ago. So we're in the process of reviewing them. But the developers made a request to get a waiver on the 0.5%, which I support just based on general good engineering practice.
Charlie, I asked you some questions. Do you mind if I go through a couple of them? Because you just, I asked you them late and you responded this afternoon and I haven't really had a chance to digest them. So if I could.
Yes.
Ask you a couple of those things.
Sure.
Your your recommendation is that the waiver is only acceptable if the velocity of full pipe flow is at least three feet per second. How do we find out what it is?
So. There's no finding out, there's no finding out, it's just, like I said before, it's a function of the pipe material, the slope of the pipe and the pipe diameter. So every pipe diameter is going to have a slightly different required slope. And that all depends on the material, so we're requiring them to have reinforced concrete pipe. Some developments are put in with high density polyethylene pipe, which has a different smoothness coefficient on the inside, which then requires a different slope. The board doesn't particularly like high density polyethylene pipe because of some problems we've had in the past in terms of its settling and joint issues, so we always. Require reinforced concrete pipe, so that'll be the pipe material and depending on. The diameter of the pipe as the stormwater moves through the system, it'll have to have whatever required slope to get that three feet per second. So it's not, it's not like a pump where you're checking it after the fact to say, oh, it's pumping at 25 feet percent or 25 cubic feet for. For minute or or second or something like that.
But I guess then that fluid dynamics formulas tell you that. You'll achieve this flow if you have certain materials and certain slope.
Yeah, yeah, and it's all been tabulated. Pretty, pretty standard information in the engineering industry.
Okay, then, my next question, I got a long answer from you. And I was worried about the projected rise in the water table and how that might affect the storm drains velocity and capacity, can you talk to that?
Well, there's, I think there were two parts to your questions and to take the groundwater issue. You know, there's, there's not been any studies that I'm aware of on the Delaware Coastal Plain on the effects of sea level rise on. The groundwater table. Undoubtedly, there will be an effect. Some studies have been done in California that indicate that like a one point or a one meter rise in sea level. Will move the water table to where it has problems, maybe up to 500 feet off the coastline. So with this particular project, I think we're far enough off the coastline that there won't be groundwater issues per se. The second part of your question, which was a good question, had to do with. If there's water in the pipes that discharge into the pond, will that affect sedimentation in the pipes? Because the purpose of having three feet per second through the pipes is to scour, one of the purposes is to scour the bottom so you don't have sediment buildup. And I can only say to that, that I've never had a problem with sediment buildup in a stormwater pipe that discharges into a pond. Sometimes we have debris that collects around the pipe outfall to the stormwater management pond. But that's generally quickly addressed either by the homeowners associations, pond management contractor, or the Board of Public Works if it comes to their attention.
So would the outfall pipe be designed to come in above the surface of the pond, above the surface of the water?
Sometimes they are, sometimes they're slightly below the the designed surface of the water, depending on the storm that it's that the pond's designed to.
And if it's in and below the surface of the water, that wouldn't affect its ability to scour out silt?
No, I've never had that problem, no.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then the, you you relied on the Dell doc manual. Well, no, maybe you didn't, you say you recall referencing it.
Yeah, I think, I don't remember, I don't remember referring to the Dell doc manual, what we base this on is what's known as the Manning's formula, which is, it has all those. Variables in tabular, all kinds of tables now that you can use, but. We use the Manning's formula, it's not, it's not something that's in a Dell doc guideline or anything.
Okay, I must have misremembered what I read in the floodplain.
Yeah, it might have been some, it might have been some other item, I think.
That actually came from the applicant, they referenced the Dell doc standards.
I got it.
Okay, thank you, Janelle, thank, and I didn't misremember, but it wasn't, it wasn't. It wasn't Charlie that relied on it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question I'd like to ask, Charlie, I'm going to ask that you indulge me. Charlie responded to a question I sent him and I have not had a chance to read it since I received it this afternoon. And my question had to do with the. The use of fill on this site, I'm wondering if now that you have the, I think you described them as the final plans. Is that what you said, you got them about 12 days ago? Yeah, the construction plans, that includes the site plans, is that correct?
Yes.
Is is the, it does the developer have the plans, does it show that he's going to be bringing fill to the site? And will that in any way impact the this slope business, the slope issue about this drainage pipe? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I looked, I looked, I looked at the plans and confirmed with the developer's design engineer. It's it's a 90% balanced site, which means they are bringing in 10% fill, which. Comes out to be about 600, 6,800 cubic yards. So it's not quite balanced, they had to bring in some some fill to get it to work. The important, it, the amount of fill is an important factor when you're considering the waiver request, because if you were to. Require them to meet the 0.5% slope, the the whole development would have to be raised, so there'd be way more fill brought in.
Think we we allowed fill on lots. I thought that's barred by our code.
No, I don't think so, I mean, maybe Janelle can speak to that, but in the floodplain, we talk about it a lot, I know, and I know that's part of what they've been talking about in the floodplain subcommittee.
Gee. It's discouraged and this site is not in the floodplain.
No, it's not.
It's not in the floodplain, so it's discouraged to fill in the floodplain and you just adopted the fill in the floodplain ordinance, but this site is not in the floodplain.
And so there's no, there's no even discouragement of fill?
Correct. Now, you.
And Rob, a 90% balanced site is pretty good.
Yeah, in the floodplain, Rob, I think what you might be thinking of is in the floodplain, you can't use fill to support a structure.
Yeah.
That is prohibition, but I don't think this, I don't think any of that applies here because it's it's over, you know, in the cornfield.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yeah.
Alright, so the, well, let me, let me approach this question in another way. Is the fact that they are bringing in now we understand 6,800 cubic yards of fill, is that in fact allowing them to make this request of the city to to to. To change the slope of this pipe?
No, it's just the opposite, if if they were required to actually meet the 0.5%, they'd have to bring in even more fill.
That gets back to that point, okay.
So, and there's another factor, there's another factor with regard to the fill too, is that. We require a minimum three foot six inch cover over the pipe, so the top of the pipe has to be a minimum three foot six below the proposed grade. So based on where they're tying in their sewer, their stormwater, et cetera. They needed that. They needed the that fill to be able to. Reach those requirements, which are standard requirements of the board.
I. Oh, the Board of Public Works?
Yes.
Uh huh. Huh, okay, thank you, Charlie.
And Mr. Panetta just, I think, put in that it hasn't been reviewed yet by the planning commission, which is true, I think both Janelle and GMB or and other people are working on their final comments, but. I think this waiver can move, that was recommended by the planning commission to the council.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good thing.
So basically, what what Tom went on to say is that Phil's not agreed to yet.
By whom?
The planning commission.
Okay.
Charlie, I know you you mentioned that velocity is used as the measure and other errors, is is it your opinion that we should move our code to measure velocity rather than. Percentage slope in the future, or if you're something we look at in the future?
Yeah, Janelle and I are beginning to work on a revision to the code, so I think this is a good discussion, so that when we bring that revision to the council, you'll have all this background discussion already. I'm thinking that. I haven't spoken to Janelle about this yet, but I'm thinking that maybe I'll have a table in there with. The various types of pipe that are that we will allow and what their diameters are and what the slope needs to be, that's the way we do it with sewer. With sanitary sewer, it's either ductile iron pipe or PVC pipe, so it's real easy. Stormwater, you sometimes get into other types of pipe, but there's really only two or three that that people use, so. I think we can do the same thing there that makes it pretty clean and clear cut.
And Charlie, remind me, but a special flood hazard area is the 100-year floodplain, right?
Yes.
Not the, not the 500-year.
No, but no.
Thanks.
Yes.
And I have one more question, you know, when you were talking about the different types of pipe that is concrete versus the reinforced concrete versus the. The plastic type of pipe that you described. The, I think you also described that the BPW frowns upon, did you describe, is that how you described it, they frowned upon the use of one particular type of material?
Well, we've had bad experiences with the HDPE pipe because it's so much lighter than the RCP that. If there is an issue.
It floats.
Groundwater will float, yes.
Right, right, so. Right, so is that, is that a detail that we as a council need to address in ordinance, or is that something that, that's why you're paid the big bucks to look, review our plans to make sure that they are. Are the infrastructure is built to the right standards?
Well, usually I charge about two minutes' time to call Darren and ask him and just confirm that. That he doesn't want the HDPE, but no, in, to be serious, it does depend on the situation a little bit, so.
Okay.
Where we might consider it to be okay, most of the time not, I would say we go with the RCP pipe, but it does kind of, it is kind of site specific.
Okay, thank you.
Good thing.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll try, I would move that we approve the recommendation from the planning commission. Of a waiver request for relief from the 0.05% slope of the storm drain pipe in the White's Pond Meadows subdivision.
Motion, is there a second? Andrew, you're muted, I'm thinking you're saying something.
I was gonna say, I I will second it.
Thank you, Andrew, so the motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I'll, I'll vote for it, sure, okay.
Rob?
Yes.
Thank you.
I I'd rather, I'd rather we dealt with the statutory question before we started waiving them.
Yes, okay, and I'll vote aye, so the motion carries. And then moving on then to item I3, which is presentation impossible, excuse me, presentation of possible action or resolution to set up public hearing regarding the revised site plan for Dutchman's Harvest located Savannah Road, Sussex County Tax Map 3 dash 35 dash 8.00. Dash 36.07 and 36.03, owner BB Medical Center, Inc., an OA Advantage Point LLC. This has come before the planning commission, I think we're all aware of this project. There was a public hearing held by the planning commission, we now need to set a public hearing at the city level. And Anne Marie again floated some dates earlier this afternoon, I'd suggest that we look at the week of the 11th. I think she proposed the 12th, 13th, or 14th for this public hearing.
The 14th did not work for people.
Okay.
And then the BPW is doing their 10-year capital plan workshop on the 13th, so we might want to go with the 12th.
Okay, does the 12th work for y'all? I've got, I'm sorry, Rob, I can't hear you.
Sorry, am I muted or what?
Oh, you're, you're on, you just muffled.
Okay. I would, I've got a conflict on the 12th. I thought I I mentioned that.
So then I guess the 13th, it would need to be, it would start two hours after the BPW meeting, so it should be okay?
Yeah, it should start two hours after, I would think we would, why don't we set it at 6:30?
6:30.
That way we get an extra half an hour there if they run over a little bit.
On the 13th, correct?
I'm correct. 6:30. Okay, could we have a motion to set that public hearing?
I'll make a motion for a public hearing on the 13th, 6:30.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, moving on then to item I4 is presentation of possible action or request from the chief of police to purchase a new police vehicle to replace existing vehicle chief, the floor is yours, you want to talk to us about this?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, you can hear me fine?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I'm just requesting that the previously approved budgeted vehicle for FY '25 that was held up for obvious fiscal issues. Be released so we can move forward with the plan to purchase it in fiscal year '21. I submitted a pretty detailed spreadsheet and outlook of our fleet with a two-year projection. The issue, the main issue for us is we currently have a 2014 Ford with almost 95,000 miles on it. It's been sidelined since September 30th as a result of needing a little over $5,000 in in repairs. President to repair that for obvious reasons due to the age of the vehicle and. Somewhat certainty that the next repair will be coming shortly after that due to its age. With that vehicle in operation, obviously it stresses our fleet with more more mileage and accelerates potential maintenance across the rest of the fleet. Also in our fleet, we have a vehicle with about 70,000 miles on it, the 2015 Ford that is aging. If you look at the overall usage of our fleet, it's approximately 104,000 miles that we drive per year. And that is without any consideration for the idle hour idle hour conversion that is on the spreadsheet. You know, industry standard is every one hour of idle time is equivalent to 33 miles driven. For me, it's about. You know, the safety of our employees and and our ability to to service our citizens in the in the manner that they deserve and. You know, I think that if we don't purchase a vehicle this year, next year. I think it looks like I'm going to need three, I don't want to get in that position, I don't think there's been a year that we haven't replaced a vehicle fleet in recent memory, a vehicle from our fleet in recent memory. So I think we're on pretty solid footing financially now and it would be nice to to move forward, keep in mind that. Get the approval to purchase a vehicle today, it's at least six months for delivery.
Questions from the table?
I have a couple, but I don't want to bump in. I have a couple, but I don't want to bump in. Chief, you said that the 2014 would cost 5,300 in repairs?
Correct.
What would a new one cost?
So I have quotes for brand-new Ford Utility Interceptor, $45,646 for the vehicle. And the hybrid version is $48,762 vehicle dollars based on the state contract pricing.
So very roughly, the repair cost is a ninth of the new car cost.
Yes.
It seems to me that's in very strict financial terms, that's not a bad payback. If we could keep the car on the road for 5,300, it, I'm not sure we need a brand-new vehicle. That's one one concern I've got. Another one is you've done a nice analysis of the of the mileage and the aging and so forth. What I haven't seen is an analysis of the need for all the bells and whistles that go into the vehicle you've referred to as a police package vehicle when we know that there are other police forces that use other vehicles for other purposes. Given the nature of the policing needed in in Lewis, I don't think we need to be a micro version of a big-city police force with fast vehicles that have rifle racks and all that. So I'm not persuaded either on the that you've done an analysis of why we need these other than we need to go fast from place to place when an ordinary civilian sedan goes plenty fast from place to place. And I'm not. I haven't seen an examination of the alternatives, which you deride, but but other police departments use. And I and I'm not persuaded by the financial case. It seems to me that to accept $5,300 in a repair cost is is worth keeping a vehicle on the road for a year. Can you help me with those things?
Yeah, well, I would say, Rob, but it's a 2014. It's old. This is a pretty major repair to the some sort of power pack and catalytic converters. It's has nothing to do with the powertrain or the engine. And I think, you know, our experience tells us it's going to incur another major expense in the year. And it's just not worth investing that money into that old vehicle. Internally, the vehicle has, you know, obviously, you know, a lot of a lot of stress on the brakes, on the electrical system. And, you know, we figure in the idle hour conversion, you know, which is industry standard, the vehicle has about 485,000 miles on it. So that's a lot. So I don't want to waste the $5,000, $5,300 when I'm pretty certain there's going to be other expenses pretty quickly. It's an old vehicle, and it's beyond its acceptable use. As far as the police package vehicles, again, as long as I'm the chief, I can't recommend any of the alternatives other than the industry standard. We owe it to our employees and our citizens to have safe vehicles. The alternatives are not acceptable for a certified police agency in the state of Delaware to have.
That's a conclusory statement.
To our vehicles for some alternate use, maybe that would be okay, but we're not in that position. We don't have specialized units that only deal in downtown areas that would possibly be acceptable to have an alternate vehicle that I think you're referring to. Obviously, we've talked about this every year, and I just don't think it's an acceptable option for police officers to be forced to drive.
I haven't heard the analysis behind why the the police package vehicle is so important to the city of Lewis.
Well.
I appreciate seeing that sometimes.
So I'll just jump in here pretty quickly. I have to say, I agree with the chief. I don't, if it was my car, I wouldn't put $5,300 into a beat-up 100,000-plus vehicle, particularly with kind of wear and tear that that these cars get. I mean, I, we've had this discussion many times in the past, and I appreciate Councilperson Morgan's concerns on this matter. To me, she that it is important for a police officer to get to a crime scene as quickly as possible and to get there with a car into which he could put or she could put a violent felon. And so I'm going to go with the expertise of the chief. I do believe that he has heard Rob on this and and other, you know, councilpersons, councilpeople's concerns about the costs in the police department, and he's done a pretty good job keeping them under control. So so I understand Rob's concerns, but I think a police officer needs to be in a real police car if they're doing general policing duties. You know, if they're just doing stakeouts or just doing parking or something like that, might be a different issue, but we don't we don't have that robust or specialized force.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just had to. Chief, we shop for car recently, and I can't perceive if there's any real benefit to buying a car at this time of year. But is that is that the case? Like, is the end of year kind of helping where you are in terms of a price point for a car? And then the second question I had, just in terms of how you go about assigning the cars, like, is it done by a tenured basis? Or how do you decide who gets kind of what age or quality of car?
Yeah, so I allow the sergeants to assign vehicles based on, you know, what they know to be the need at the patrol level. But they're definitely rotated, so they're not, you know, with few exceptions, use 24 hours a day. It's nice to have some downtime for a vehicle. And you definitely don't want to, I guess we call it hot seating, where one guy jumps out, the other guy jumps in. So there, you know, it makes sense internally to us to assign them so they have downtime, so people are on opposite shifts when they use them and opposite days as well. As far as the price point, yeah, I don't know. I can look at that. Obviously, yeah, the year-end deals in the civilian world are good. We have state contract pricing, so those are
Pretty flat.
You know, yeah, year-round. But I will say that last year, we purchased a 2018 leftover in the middle of 2019. It was kind of a one-time deal. We just IG Burton happened to have it, and we found it at a great price. That's the white Tahoe that you see around. I don't think I'm going to find any of those anymore. They're changing the design, and there's no more leftovers. So I don't think that's going to be an option this year. But I think the state contract pricing was pretty consistent.
Timmy, you're muted. You're still muted, Tim. There you go.
There we go, thank you. I. Where am I going to go with this? My. I'm really conflicted about this particular issue. And one of them is the biggest issue I'm conflicted about is why we are considering this purchase today in December when we're going to be doing our budget work during this next quarter? And this question is directed to you, Chief Spel, but also to our able treasurer to and, you know, to advise advise me, advise us on the financial impact of this kind of purchase. It seems to me we're out of sequence for this.
Well, I think what chief's getting at is that this is budget, this is something that was budgeted for in this year. So that's this is a question for Bonnie.
Oh, good.
It was budgeted in the FY20 budget.
Yeah, I think I think we suspended this acquisition because of COVID, and we weren't sure where where we were going to be. So, yeah, I think this I think this is something that we already budgeted for.
So it is a fun, it's a funded purchase, in other words?
Yes, it's not a plus. It wouldn't have to be added to, say, an amended budget because I think it's already there.
Okay.
And just to add, one of the reasons we deferred is because we did not know if we were going to get reimbursed for a lot of our COVID expenses. And now we we've been told that we are through the CARES Act.
Yeah, thank you very much.
At the end of October.
Right, all right. So the financial people during for this meeting are are satisfied that this is not going to burden us in any way. It's all taken care of as far as that part, right?
Well, it's already budgeted. It's already budgeted.
Yes, that's what I mean.
It's still a cost, but it's already budgeted.
Right, but yeah, okay. I have, and I apologize, I had to step away for a minute. I had two cross-eyed dogs looking at me. Is there any benefit to consider the hybrid model with rebates from the manufacturer, from the federal government? Are there any incentives like that that we need to be aware of?
Yeah, I think.
Maybe you've talked about that already.
I did, and that's what I was just going to repeat. The hybrid is about $3,200 more initial cost.
Right, right.
Manufacturer, you make that up, I think, in a year and a half. So we're definitely open to reviewing the hybrid and looking at it. I don't know.
Yeah.
Ellen Rain, they have to remind me the exact amount budgeted, but I think it's close.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah, I did hear that there was a delta between the two, between gas and the hybrid. And I was just wondering if there was any kind of a tax incentive to go for the hybrid.
$3,200, I don't think tax incentives apply to the police vehicle.
Probably doesn't apply to the state, probably doesn't apply to the state list either.
Right, the state contract.
Oh, okay.
It's a second or third year of the hybrid model, and I think it's, all the kinks are worked out, and most are very comfortable with it. So we're definitely open to reviewing it.
How many hybrid models do you have now, chief?
Currently on the fleet?
Yeah.
None.
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 We have a couple of civilian.
Of course, yeah, but I was talking about his, you know, if I was curious as to how they were performing, given the demands they put on them at the PD.
Right.
Well, I'll tell you that at least from a car which is hybrid, that the hybrid model has more high horsepower than the gas. Now, for something that's for police, I don't know if that has any applicability whatsoever, but.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
So we have a motion on this.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the chief to use his budget for a for a new car.
I'll second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as you said, it's going to be six months between now and the time you probably get the vehicle fully equipped, and it's here. So you will not take delivery on it in this fiscal year.
On the road, that would be accurate.
Yeah, okay. Moving then on to item I five, is presentation of possible actual renewal of the lease to the Sandy Beach Shop. This is the shop located on Savannah Road at American Legion Drive. This is a long-term tenant that we've had there. It's passed from one generation to the nut to the next. Anne Marie, have any comments about this lease?
No, it's it's just a renewal. We have an escalator of, I think, $200 a month. No, I'm sorry, $20 a month that goes up each year, so that's built in. It's pretty standard.
Right. There have been no problems with this lease. Actually, I think they've made some improvements on their own to the property, have they not?
I think so.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this lease? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Okay, the motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll vote for it, yeah.
Motion carries five.
I apologize, I was.
Moving on then to item I six, is presentation of possible action on a request for a lease extension for 1912 Bay Avenue. This is a standard lease extension, I believe, Lynn?
That's correct, buy rate extension, nine years.
And Anne Marie has provided.
Photographs are there, right?
Been some photographs here to review. I think basically the there are no significant encroachments, is that correct, Anne Marie?
That is correct. Janine actually put together the photographs, but yes, no encroachments.
All right, is there a motion to approve this lease extension?
I have a, I would like to speak to this. This is proposed. Can you? Yeah, my my concern is that the driveway width. I'd like to draw your all's attention to the first photograph in the file that was provided. And I am reminded that we do have an ordinance that regulates the width of driveways. And this driveway width is excessive. And I want to bring that to your attention.
Yeah.
Could I ask one quick question? I mean, I'm not, I think I'm re, I'm looking at these photographs correctly. The driveway that you're talking about, Tim, that's that gravel part?
Right, that's correct. It's the gravel driveway to the house, that's right.
And that goes to Bay Avenue, right, where there's no parking allowed? Okay, I mean, I get your point, but there's no parking allowed on Bay Avenue. So the width, the reason that we had the the limitation on the width of a driveway was because we were afraid that people were eating up parkable space. This is parkable space, if I if I follow this correctly.
Yeah, I understand that, but the ordinance that we have does not omit, does not make that exception or omission, if you will. It just says all driveways will not exceed 20-foot width. And I actually did measure this one, and it's 38 feet wide.
Are existing driveways grandfathered? Or is this something we were going to take up when we had the lease the lease renewals? I don't remember.
I believe they're grandfathered. I don't think.
We have not had anybody remove an existing driveway. I don't know how long this driveway's been there.
It do, okay, well, which brings me to another question I will ask. It's a, I have a question and a favor to ask, a request. The 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 favor would be, in the future, I think, when we get these lease requests, and these photos are very, very helpful, it would be helpful if if the planner provided narration so that we had the benefit of knowing what, you know, what we should be focusing on when we are looking at these photos to make sure that we, you know, are not that we, if we need to address a code violation, that we are address the code violation.
Typically, she she does note if there are, if there are violations, correct? I think in this case, there's none noted.
Correct.
Right.
Well.
So and typically what we've looked for when we do the photographs in the in the survey, we've typically looked for encroachments into the right of way. We have not looked to see that, I mean, again, when there's a non-conformity, we don't know if it predates the code or if it was something that was done
Right.
without regard for the code.
Where my next, and that was my next question was, do you know at the time that the council, the previous council enacted that ordinance regulating the width of driveways, was there any effort to capture what the driveway widths were at that time on that day? You know, did you create a data file to see if, in fact, you know, what changes have taken place since then?
I'm not aware of any time that we, there was any capture of that, Tim.
Yeah, and I don't know when, and I don't know, I don't think Robin is on the line, but. Yeah, and I, I don't know when, and I don't know, I don't think Robin is on the, the line, but I don't know when they set the driveway width.
I think it's been like the last two years.
No, that was, um, that was the access, the driveway access in the right of way. There's already, there's, the zoning ordinance sets the driveway width.
Right.
And that's been in place before that.
Right, okay, well, I'm speaking, of course, where the edge of the driveway meets the right of way, the paved right of way in this case.
You're talking about the access from the paved street.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, then, yes, if Charlie O'Donnell was to on the, on the call, he might call that. It would be called, it would be called a driveway apron, I think, in most, in most people in the trick, in the engineering world, right?
Lacking curb, where there, the driveway aprons become rather blurred.
Right. Yeah, I'm aware of all that.
Backyard.
I beg your pardon?
Some places in New Jersey, you might call that a backyard.
Right.
I mean, it's, just because it has stones, doesn't necessarily make it a driveway.
Right. Okay, well, I I, I, I will remind you all that we do not have an exception, the code does not say that people on Bay Avenue are exempt from this twenty-foot width ordinance. So, take it up as you'd like, I just want to bring that to your attention.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion, Rob, what were you about to say?
I just think it's an important point that Tim is making, I'm not sure, though, that, that it helps us hear, because as Bonnie pointed out, this is a driveway on Bay Avenue, and we don't know when it was put in.
We have no, we had no information about when it was put in, at all, and.
And, and, and getting back to that, when driveways are modified, is that a, does that require a permit from our building department?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, any new driveway would have, would be subject to the twenty-foot curb cut, or twenty-foot.
Width, right.
Width at the apron, not necessarily internal to the lot.
Right.
So, there are many driveways that have been put in, since that was enacted, that have a twenty-foot apron, and then go to a wider parking area once on the private property.
Right, and there are many that have been put in that exceed the twenty-foot width at the apron as well.
I, I'd have to look at that, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, is there a motion to approve, or is there a motion regarding this lease extension?
I'll make a motion to approve the lease extension for nine-twelve Bay Avenue.
Second.
Thanks, Bonnie, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim, you voting?
Uh, I'm gonna say no.
Okay, I vote yes, so, motion carries four to one. Moving on to I seven, is presentation of possible action on a request to lease extension of two oh nine East Savannah Road. This is a lease extension, very similar to the other one.
Same thing there, it's by right, but I will mention that earlier today, I sent out, sent out a revised page one. We had a Carol Lewis Wagner instead of a Carl Lewis, so that's, that's been corrected to Carl, and, pardon, the second part, along with Laura. Additionally, the third, whereas clause, we amended that a bit to clarify how the Wagners received the property from the, the Hanson's, so, there's been a couple of clarifications, if you approve this, I ask you to approve it in the version that was turned out later, or, earlier today, but not the one that's appended to the agenda.
Correct, thank you. Is there any discussion on this, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Move to grant the extension.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Andrew, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Moving on to item I eight, this is a presentation of possible action on a request to establish a veterans memorial in Canalfront Park, and this is a request that came from John Nirbus, who's a member of our planning commission, but he's also the president of the American Flag Guardians, and they are the organization that maintains our US flags, at our various flag poles around the city, no charge to the city. They also are the organization that took, took care of the collection of damaged flags earlier this fall over at Beach One. John had called me about this, I suggested he send this letter, I think this is, they're looking at the possibility, they're suggesting Canalfront Park, suggests that we refer this to the planning commission, or, excuse me, the Parks and Rec Commission for their consideration and discussion before we take action about establishing.
I have a question, on the agenda item report, the docu, the memorial is described as a Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and yet, the letter from John Nirbus describes it just as a veterans memorial, do you know what the intent of this memorial is?
We actually amended the agenda to take the word Vietnam out, because it is just, it, it is veterans, not specific.
The original was a round of Vietnam veterans, but then the, the letter, when it came in, actually says veterans memorial.
Okay, so it is veterans, thank you.
Mayor, if I might speak to this, I think this is a really great idea, it comes from John, who was a Marine veteran of the Iraq War, and it's a long overdue idea, I think, Bonnie, I think you've spoken about it many years ago, and I actually started looking into finding out who the fallen were, from Louis. It's going to be a, a big challenge, because we, we're such an old city, but, and I've got a couple of ideas on how not to dishonor anyone, and how to, to honor the fallen in all the conflicts. But I think this motion is to refer it to the, to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Correct.
And I would move that we do that.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bonnie, we were about to say something.
Yeah, I agree that it's, it's a good idea, I, I don't, I, I understand what Rob is saying about specifically honoring the fallen, because obviously, they've paid the ultimate price for their patriotism, but I don't know that we have to enumerate the fallen. I mean, if this is gonna be a veterans memorial, I think it can be a memorial to all veterans, both those who perished and those who survived. Just a couple of, and Parks and Rec should work this out, but just a couple of thoughts, we already have a couple of sort of commemorations in Swanendale Park, we've got the, the folks who perished on the Dubrock, and we've got the Futch, the, the, the Officer Fletcher Memorial, so Swanendale is another possible place for this, it's right by the museum, it's, it's a little more central. I mean, I'm not prejudging it at all, I'm just saying that's another possibility. The other thing that I thought of when I was reading about this is, I mean, two things, I guess, first of all, who's gonna pay for it? That's, of course, always a question, but, second, whether or not, and Rob, this may be in, in your bucket, you have public art, right?
Yes.
Okay, is, should, should the Public Art Committee have any contribution to this, since they're trying to sort of think of things comprehensively? You know, maybe have it go to parks and then refer it over, or they can look at it jointly, just another thought in terms of bringing all those competencies to bear.
Well, you said you had public art, and that was accurate, but I don't have public art, that's now Andrew.
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up in January, we can, we can bring that, but that's probably the proper cadence, though, right? Is to have him go to Parks and Rec first, and then have.
Yeah, I mean, one may have more to do with location and the other with aesthetics, I, I don't know, but both of those commissions should have a say.
I think the, the Park Commissioners, since it's specific to Canalfront Park with the request, I think Rodney Robinson, who's the steward for the park, will provide excellent input, and with John regarding what could possibly be there, and.
I.
Go ahead, Tim.
I apologize for interrupting you, Ted, finish your thought, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, do you know if the purpose of this memorial is to honor just Louis natives who have served, you know, veterans, or is this just national veterans, you know, all, all veterans?
I think it would be, I think it would be honoring all Louis, not necessarily natives, but Louis residents, Louis people who have a connection to, as a veteran.
Yeah, like, like Rob and Ed.
Anybody who served in the military, who was a veteran.
And Glenn.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, I just wanted to get that clarified, thank you.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to refer this to the Parks and Rec Commission?
I saw, I already moved that.
I'm sorry, didn't hear you do that, Rob, okay, we have a second to it.
It was seconded by, by Councilperson Richard.
Okay, great, that's right, I'm sorry, beginning of a long day, the end of a long day, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving then on to item I nine, is presentation of possible action on proposed ordinance to amend Chapter One, General Provisions, as it relates to the roles and authorities of City Council, the mayor, and the city manager. Rob, you want to talk about this?
Sure, this would accomplish something that I think is long overdue. We have a charter that, that distributes authorities between the mayor and the city council, and it authorizes us to hire a city manager with such duties as we may impose on her, but it, it, we've never said what those are, so, and, and there's also functions that the mayor has performed, but we've never recognized that he should be performing them, and there's ways that we, as a council, operate that we've never written down, so, primarily, this is designed to capture the way we do operate. And I think it's, it's divided into three sections, one applicable to the mayor, one to the city council, which includes the mayor, and a third for the city manager, and it outlines the responsibilities of, and authorities of each of those three categories. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, is there a discussion?
I would just mention, I appreciate this, just as someone who's, who is new to the council, in terms of, as Rob said, there's a lot of areas in our ordinances that are either duplicative or unclear, so, this, I think, just provides some clarity around that.
You done, Andrew, I didn't want to.
I am, yep.
Um, here, here's my thought on this, I'm, I'm certainly not against having clarity, you know, maybe that's necessary, maybe it's not, but, to me, this, the potential for the ordinance as written is to significantly change the way the city council has always operated, and more importantly, to, to by changing that, and by changing authorities, by changing the way we structure our government, is to run the significant risk of having a very unhappy populace. So, I do not believe that this is something that we can just say, oh, at the end of an agenda that's been going on for three hours, let's just talk about, you know, changing the way we do things, because to me, this changes us from being a the city government from being a mayor-centric thing, and we can debate whether that's good or bad, you know, whether the position of mayor should, should be different to a city council, or a city manager-centric government, and we could also debate, in my view, whether that is good or bad, but I do not believe that this simply memorializes the way the city works at the moment, and for that reason, what I would suggest would be prudent is that we take, actually take a look at this and study it, and use Rob's good work as a basis, but I do not believe that this is something that one simply tosses off at the end of a three-hour meeting, because I think it makes a fundamental difference, because what, you know, rightly or wrongly, in this town, and in most towns that I've ever lived in, people say, people go to the mayor, and, you know, that's, you know, we can change that if we want to, but not, not on some piece of paper at the end of a three-hour meeting, so, you know, if we are now gonna basically funnel all of those things to Anne Marie, then I think we need to look at that and say, alright, what is it we are asking the position of the city manager to do? What additional staff resources does that position need in order to fulfill the obligations and duties that we are now directing there? How do we want to work this out? So, my, my strong suggestion to my colleagues is, let's take a look at this and refine it, and decide if, if we do want to change the way we do things, okay, but let's do it in a, in a thoughtful, careful way.
Well, a couple of things, first of all, I didn't place this in the last spot on the agenda, I think the mayor did that.
That's when we're getting to it.
Yes, and second, it's been out there for a while, I think I sent it to you weeks ago, Bonnie. We've all been able to discuss it, third, I'd be interested if you can show me where here the this creates something new.
Rob, I'm not gonna play that game with you at nine-thirty at night, and it's, my point is not whether we have discussed it among ourselves, which of course we can't because of FOIA, so presumably, we haven't, but rather, what, how is this gonna work? Right, there was a reference, take this, whatever meeting, choose a meeting, who's gonna be there? The way it's always worked, and I'm not saying it should work that way, but the way it's always worked is it would be the city manager and the mayor. Okay, so what's gonna happen now, as I read this, it will be the city manager. That's fine, if that's what we want to do, but I don't, I haven't had any discussion, I mean, I'd be happy to serve on a committee or attend committee meetings to discuss it, but I don't know how this is gonna work. So, that is, that's, that's my view, is that this is potentially significant, it needs to be explained to the citizens, we need to understand how it's gonna work, and, you know, that if we want to go down this road, that's fine, but let's do it deliberately and thoughtfully.
Well, I would repeat that this is designed to capture the way we do work and should work, and I think we've, we've jumped the gun a little bit, but a mayor, in order to get this property before the council, I would move that we adopt the proposed ordinance.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it, because I agree, I, I've, I've read this over quite a few times, and I don't see things that are, that we're doing, that's, that, that we're adding out, that's, that's new substantively. I think it just provides clarity around the role, so, I, I'll second.
Any further discussion? I will say that. Go ahead, Tim.
May I ask a question of Bonnie, please? Bonnie, you're, you were suggesting that there be another way for us, that we should think about this, take some time, think about it, and, and then work through it, I guess, how would we work through this as a group? As five members of a council, how can we come together and discuss this, what are you proposing?
We do it like you do anything, it's gonna be a public process. We do it like you do anything, it's be a public process.
Right. Okay. I thought you were suggesting that there be some other vehicle for us getting together and having that discussion, that's all I wanted to...
I think, not only do I think you have to do it in public, but I think you want to do it in public.
Right.
And in, I mean, in terms of whether this involves clarity or not, I mean, I'll just pose the question I asked before, what I said before. We just talked about this memorial suggestion, good idea. It came in because, if I understand it correctly, because John sent a letter to, or had a communication with, and then followed up with a letter that is addressed to Ted Becker. Looking at it. How is that going to work in the future? If a citizen has an idea, are they, do they just go to any council person? Do they go to Anne Marie? I mean, like I said, I'm not saying that the model we have now is necessarily the one we want to keep, but it's the one we've got, and this will change that. So, yeah, I'm not going to repeat myself again.
There's no reason that the citizen would have to do anything different than he does now, under this ordinance.
Well, I...whatever, I've said, I've had my piece, I'm not going to prolong this any further, I think that's...
I do think it would better, I think this ordinance before it's adopted would be better if there were some opportunity for the public to have some reaction to it, so... I think that there may, there's some good things in here, there are some things that I think the public would need to understand more clearly as to what, how these changes would impact their interaction with us, so...
I will say that I do like the idea that the authority of the city manager is better defined, I find that very useful. And I'm comfortable with that kind of city management, approach of city management, it's what I'm used to from other areas where I've lived, so, and it does work, and it works well.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, I think we've come to the end of this agenda, we do have an opportunity for an executive session. It seems to me that we had an executive session earlier tonight before we had this meeting, and I think we are in a position where we do not have anything further to discuss, is that correct, Anne Marie and Glenn, at this point?
That's right.
We're good.
So we can have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and happy holidays to everyone, thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.